But she might be a little bit after six. It's already a little bit after six. I thought we'd go ahead and start with our work session in which we are going to be hearing about the Chatham Park residential and commercial growth plan for the near future. Chuck Smith, I believe, are you going to be making our presentation tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also want to take the opportunity, since I don't ever get to tell these kind of stories to you, we spend a lot of time talking about trees and open space and water. But I'll go to a little bit different part of Chatham Park, too, just as an update. This is all of Chatham Park. We don't talk about this much either, but some of you, I think most of you are familiar with this, but this is all of our land plan. But we're going to focus primarily on the North Village with what we're talking about tonight. That's everything, really, from 64 Business North. And what I want to talk about first, though, is the technology innovation side of what we're trying to do, because that takes a little bit of planning and a little bit of workforce to get there, but it's an important part of what we're doing. It will be a part of Pittsburgh as we grow together. Because what we're really trying to become is a smart city. And a lot of people talk about that, but what is that? What is a smart city? And the best description I've seen is that it's a Fitbit for the city. I can understand what a Fitbit is, what a Fitbit does for me. I mean, it manages a few pieces of data for me that I care about. And this is the same sort of thing that goes on within smart cities. And trying to manage that data is what we're going to be trying to do. Trying to determine what those data points are is going to be what we're trying to do. Today, in the world, there are 2.5 billion connected devices. And in two years, there are going to be four times that many, 10 billion connected devices. So we're obviously moving in this direction whether we want to or not. A big part of that is going to be through the ability, you know, with high-speed internet and Wi-Fi. And we have entered into agreement where we're going to have up to a capability of 2 gigabytes per home or up to 10 gigabytes for businesses with Wi-Fi. I think probably the more important part of this network, though, is going to be the cellular part of the network that we've got Durham Tower as our partner in this. I don't know if you've seen this graphic before, but in 2001, the 3G network came into being with your phones. And at that time, if you tried to download a two-hour movie, it took 26 hours to do that. In 2009, 4G came along, and you could download that same movie in six minutes. Okay, in 2020, so a year and a half from now, we're going to have 5G. 3.6 seconds to download that two-hour movie. Okay, now 5G is really going to be the backbone for the autonomous vehicle. That's what really makes that all possible. And the connected, and all this connectivity going on between all these devices, which vehicles are going to be a big part of that. This happens, I mean, everyone's seen the big cell towers, but this is going to be many, many, many smaller cells that are going to be on top of buildings, on top of stadiums. Light poles are going to be a big part of that, so that you're getting a much more thorough or a much more complete system by using these everyday pieces of infrastructure that are in our communities and building this system. Because that leads us to being able to then have smart transportation. And that's where we're going. And we've been talking about it a good bit within Chatham Park and just how this affects us. This timeline, you know, when will you be able to buy a driverless car? You can buy one now. And I can't read everything as closely as I need to be, but I think by 2040, 50% of the traffic will be autonomous vehicles. There's a point, and I guess it's 2070, and 95% of traffic will be autonomous vehicles. So, yeah, in 2030, all these self-driving cars are going to be purchased. So there's going to be this transition period where we've got existing vehicles that we're still trying to transition through as we move to every vehicle being autonomous. And so what does that do to the roadway? You know, we talked about, we talk about complete streets a good bit, but when you throw the autonomous vehicle in there, that puts a new element into that conversation. And at some point, and I don't know how true this is, it's hard for me to believe that you're going to be able to, I mean, you can't have every roadway that's going to have that much right of way associated with it, but still, there's going to be this transition of having people driving on the road while you've got the autonomous vehicles on the road, too. Now, the other big part of this is probably more of a public policy piece to this puzzle is are we all going to be driving our own, or driving sounds right, are we all going to own our own autonomous vehicle and still have the same number of cars on the road? That'll be, obviously, I think the automotive network or companies would want you to do that. 85% of the time, our car is sitting in a parking space. So, you know, the more subscription-based programs like Uber and Lyft and other things like that are because a lot of people are starting to say they don't need to own a vehicle. And so the question is going to be, is it going to be more of a subscription-based program as we move into the future? And if that happens, there are going to be fewer vehicles on the road since not everyone would be owning one. We talked about BRT. This is going to be one way that you'll be traveling if you don't own a vehicle, or if you do, more of this will be occurring. I think this is going to be a big part of connecting to the rest of the triangle, up 15501 to Chapel Hill in Durham and down 64 to Cary and Raleigh. And the way this looks, when you see it in play, is that you've got dedicated lanes that would be given to transit. And if you've got fewer cars on the road, you could be taking some of those existing lanes and turning those into transit lanes. And you'll see that happen. Right now, you can go to Richmond, I think it's the closest place you can go to see this happening, where you have those stations, much like a light rail system, but it's a bus rapid transit system. And then, at the same time, you see more and more car share, you've heard of bike share in other urban areas. It's now moving to car share, where you can go check out or have a car to use for the, usually it's a mile. They talk about the first mile, the last mile. Those are the important miles when you're trying to get this kind of transportation network. Right, but this is also what's coming. Uber has this in play now in three cities. This is mostly music and sound. A lot of this in the chairs, he's watching out the people driving on. But they are starting to test this in three cities in Dallas, LA, and Dubai. If this is a community that's going to be adding the apples and those kind of companies out, we're going to be, we'll have this sort of capability and not do this in the future.
Thank you.
And then, you know, we're already, Vanessa's been, I know, talked to Apple and maybe Amazon. You know, people want to be, companies want to be the exclusive provider of the smart home programs for our houses. I don't know that we're eliminated to any one provider, but we're already getting into those kind of conversations. But we first talked, also talked previously about, we're trying not to do just this, I don't say this is typical, but when, you know, talking about the HVAC or talking about security or the different things that you can control with smart homes, we're also trying to be, you know, connecting our public utilities to this network as well. And that's why we've been talking to you just about, you know, whether it's your own water and being able to discuss with you, like the town of Cary, I think we've talked about this, say, within three hours, unless somebody's got a toilet running upstairs. That's going to be important, just in conserving water. And we will, we've said we'll have electric charging stations within every home in Chatham Park. We've already started providing commercial charging stations on our commercial lots. Mr. Piocco has already been involved in this whole issue about whether that's going to be required for handicap users, which is really going to be an interesting conversation to have with that as it plays out in the future. We've talked about the, our water reclamation plant that's under construction, you know about that, but that's very, we've talked about it so long, in some ways, it's become sort of nonchalant even to talk about it. It's a pretty big deal, and nobody's got this. Very few people have this, when I say nobody. It's going to be very important for this community, a very important story, a sustainable story to tell others as they come visit this. And we're putting purple pipe in the ground, even though there is no water there to serve our businesses, but there will be, so we're already preparing for that. Solar parks under construction, we'll get into that. You know, most of the construction is already taking place with UNC Medical Building, our offices next to UNC Medical, the hospice that's been built. This is a pretty current photograph, Freedom Parkway, and the site's next to our office as you're looking north. You know about the art of the roundabout, Russet Run, Penguin Place is up and running in the Root Cellar. I think people are already pretty happy with that. And I think, did you say it's fully leased out now? Very important milestone to have hit so early. This is a current, pretty current photo showing the paving has taken place on one site, stone and curb to gutter down on the other side prior to buildings being constructed on blocks three and four there next to the medical building. I don't know if you have seen the way these buildings will look, but they'll both be tied together architecturally. And I think we're still planning on having that tree canopy look as part of the art statement for those buildings. I'm not going to say too much about the mosaic, because they're going to be coming in to do that themselves when they get their plan approved in a month or so. But these are some of the images that go along with that. You can have a look at those. Hunter Root Motel, 369 apartments, amphitheater, public amphitheater out within the public spaces, and a view of a works yard where they would be setting up farmers' markets on the weekend or art shows or things like that. But now let's get into specifically what's coming residentially. And I told you this before, I think, when I brought it up. It's important, but this isn't just, you know, something to, it's really cool to hear that. The reason we're trying to give you this information, and we periodically met with the county on things like this, isn't one of these things where one day you're going to go, you know, I wish we had started hiring staff a year ago. I think these numbers are going to prove to be fairly close to being true, and you're going to, you need to be able to use this kind of information as you're planning for future staffing, and Mr. Bruce Beck needs to do this. So we're trying to just give you, as we promised previously, trying to give you as much of a heads up on some of the things that we've got coming that you may not know about. Phase one you do know about, because you've already approved this, but it's 59 total residential lots, 29, fairly traditional 70-foot wide in this case. This neighborhood would be larger lots. And then 30 cottages. We've got updated elevations on those cottages from what we've shown you before. So those are fairly, it's pretty current, the images of what the cottages will look like. We're pretty, I told you, we're pretty excited about the cottages. And another important part of this is that construction for this neighborhood will start next week, which means I wish we would get these phone calls, but we're not going to get the phone calls telling us how bad a job we're doing. You're going to get those. So just a heads up that construction will be starting, and you'll probably be getting phone calls for all kinds of reasons. Phase two is just north of that. It really, so there's phase one, right there, phase two is in that circle. Plans have been, the staff, the last couple months, is that about right? The staff has been reviewing and comments and response to the comments have been going back and forth. There's approximately 300 units in this area, with 70 of them being townhomes, the other 240 being a variety of sizes of single-family lots. Now, another, I think, important point here, and this has changed even since we started talking about Chatham Park, but this is also what's been going on in the housing industry. I would say in 1980 that the average lot size was 12,000 square feet. Probably in the 90s, that went to 10,000, then it went to 8,000, then it went to 6,000. I've been telling everybody the last year or so that I think, you know, what was the 12,000 square foot lot back then is 4,500 now, but the builders tell me now that it's 3,500, it's 35 by 100 feet, is really that bread and butter size lot around the country that used to be that quarter acre lot. So you're going to see, and that's if you've really looked at what's going on prior to Chapel, I mean, that's what you'll find, it's much smaller product. And all of it trying to really get affordability and not necessarily trying to be what you would call affordable housing, but just trying to keep it within the realm of being affordable to the average person. And so we're going to, we'll see that as part of these phases of Chatham Park as well. Phase three is kind of between, we're phase one and phase two are located with about, with a couple of hundred lots and a pretty, a variety of townhomes, more cottages, and then more of the single-family lots in the 40 to 45-foot range. But this is where, and we've been talking about this during the, in the Affordable Housing Committee meetings, this is where we would be proposing some of our first accessory dwelling units as part of that neighborhood. And you'll hear more about it when that is being submitted, is the detail of that, but this is a photo of an example, say, a 400-square-foot apartment on top of the garage. This is going to be a pretty important in the affordable housing conversation we'll be having over the next few months. Another part of phase three going on at the same time, though, is on the far side of 64 Bypass. And you can see just to the left of the screen there is the intersection of 15501 and 64. So this would be behind our existing offices of the UNC Medical Office, where we would be doing the first phase of an active adult or adult restricted neighborhood. The total's going to be 350 or so lots, 150 would be in this first phase of that neighborhood. And then we go into the next phase, but really would start coming pretty soon here, because this would be the apartments within the mosaic project. They've got 369 apartments, I think proposed for that, 222 in a standalone building, and the rest would be located over the, either as part of a senior housing project or of a residential of retail within the project. The next part of phase four, though, is when we get into the heart of crossing north, just northwest or northeast, excuse me, of the bridge and interchange with our village center. And this would be a pretty wide mix of units. And that, the configuration of the land there is really based on what could be seared fairly easily with existing infrastructure or proposed infrastructure that we've got, well, that may be getting pretty expensive facilities that come because of terrain change, different topography, different watersheds. But it would include condominiums, townhomes, cottages, and then, again, a wide variety of single-family lots totaling about 700 units or so. Phase five gets into what is primarily on the lot property that we would be, that we have, that we have purchased, but it's technically not a part of Chatham Park. And the zoning of that would be coming to you later this summer to be looking at these kinds of uses. The particular phase we're talking about here in phase five is the remaining portion of the age-restricted neighborhood. That's about 200, let's just say 200 units. On the north side, that is Grant Drive that goes by our existing offices right now, would be extended east through Chatham Park and then ending in Chatham Park. Phase six is an apartment site that would be, that's Grant again, Grant Drive right there, that would be on closer to the intersection of 15501, but on the south side of Grant Drive, just past our existing offices. So there'd be about 300 apartments with that project. And then the last phase that we show, this is where we are building the streets and utilities, is phase seven, the remainder of the village center. The total's about just under 700 units with apartments, townhomes, cottages, and then single-family lots.
Approximately what year?
The construction of the infrastructure and the roads that would be completed in '23. So all of this is by 2023, and generally, housing would follow the next year. I'll do for all of these. Now, what I'd like to, I'll zoom in at this with you, is, let's give you some numbers associated with this. So what we've done here is taken the larger fiscal impact analysis, we had done it for all of Chatham Park, and just broken it down into these phases. And this is really just for information, just again, to give you a heads up. I mean, it's one thing to say you need to add staff, but it's another thing, we were trying to show you, at least based on all the data, what your revenues would be associating with this kind of development. So the first page really breaks it down, again, by the units that we talked about in those phases and the unit types. And then that translates into a certain value for that residential. And then the next page does the same thing for non-residential numbers that have really not tried, I haven't spoken too much about non-residential, but this is just assuming, you know, what we've already, what's already in place now, what's been in place in the buildings we've built, what mosaic's going to be doing, a little bit that we know about. So it doesn't talk much more beyond that. And I think we've answered this question this way, so most of the non-residential that we've been talking to has been waiting for rooftops before they say, you know, we're ready to come. So we've got to do our marketing and housing there in the non-residential follows, but we still have a fairly strong amount just because of the activity that's going on down 15501 from a traffic standpoint. And then, really, the conclusion of that is on the last page that gets you into the revenues that will be derived based on the numbers that we've talked about in these phases for the town and for Chatham County. Now, one of the things, one of the things that throws some of these numbers out of whack a little bit is the fact that up until this point in time, we've paid over $7 million to the county in taxes for our undeveloped land. And we will continue to pay about $900,000 a year for the foreseeable future for the undeveloped land outside of the phases we've talked about. So the ratios that you would normally see of about 60/40, or they get a little bit over 60 cents, and you get a little over 40 cents out of a dollar five, is a little bit off just because of how much they've gotten and will continue to get from land that has not been hatched yet and that is in the county. So that's all I've got. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions from the board?
I just have a request. I think I've finished working on this, the first part of your presentation.
Can we start over?
Yeah, we can start over. Or either that or if you can just, if it's possible, get a copy of that question that you have.
Mr. Bruce Beck's, I think, got a PDF on his computer now.
In future, I'd love to be able to follow on, but to see, it's hard for me to see that screen, and I don't see that screen, so.
Yeah, I can, I think I have the same angle you do. I appreciate your point.
And I'm just looking at these numbers, that's extrapolation of current tax rates.
Yes, and projecting them forward, even though that...
May not be the same in 2024.
And it does, I mean, one of the reasons it throws some of the things in here like population and things like that. I do have further data that gets into sales tax projections and some of these other things that y'all get into that I could give you if you're interested, but that wasn't really the point tonight, although it is additional revenue for you.
Are there thoughts on questions?
The only thing I got to say, it looks like Jetson's, um, show's gun is live. Some of us, that's no Jets.
I had that video on there. I knew you'd get it, and nobody else did, but you're right, you're right.
It is, it really is.
Which is why we need Chatham Hall to be at least four stories high.
We gotta have a plan, man. Have a plan.
One thing I didn't say, too, this kind of ties into some of Mr. Piocco's points from a couple of weeks ago. The timing of the, it was phase four particularly, the timing of that, that's the location for the elementary school site. And we, part of the timing of that phase is also because of when at least the school administration's told us they're looking at possibly needing the school by then. So that's, that...
By phase four?
Right. And not having the school itself, but us having the infrastructure in, so that then the construction for the school could follow behind that and meet their schedule. Now, we've all heard, I mean, those things are very... the construction for the school could follow behind that and meet their schedule. Now, that we've all heard, I mean, those things are very fluid. There's no guarantee on what, at least, I know it won't be ahead of that, but we're trying to, from our standpoint, meet our side of that obligation by having infrastructure.
Is there a total?
One other thing I wanted to show you, yeah, and saying, that's a pretty current aerial of the, it looks great, Mr. Bond, if you could see it, of the construction of the ramps and the interchange there at Central Board and Chatham Parkway. Not too far from, I mean, some of the paving has begun, but the rain's going to slow that down a little bit over the next few weeks. But that's still under, I think, on schedule to be open in less than a year from now. And that's not just the interchange, but also the rest of the Chatham Parkway.
Is there a stream crossing?
Pardon?
Is there a stream crossing?
There's a few of them in there.
Okay. So what you were talking about was roughly 2,500 houses going in within the next, what, five years?
Yeah, I think it's closer to 3,000. And that's probably the product on the ground, it'll be more than five years for all of that to be able to go. The lots and the improvements will be made to the sites, the lots will be on the ground, the houses will be going up. And we're sort of projecting 350 to 400 or so. Our chapel is getting their, what they have to sell, and they've been selling 350 or so a year. So we expect that to just roll right, roll right into this. So it's, and I think that's one of another reason that we were trying to have such a diverse mix of products so that you, I mean, if everything was the same size, you're competing against yourself. But we plan on having a good dozen or more, just don't know how many at this point, with different product types and price points so that you're able to be attracting a variety of buyers and demographics.
Well, phases one and two are pretty clear, Philly's Academy, which is now slated to be taking students in 2019?
No, it's not, we're gonna, their site will not be complete until, if we start next week, and that's, I know we're starting that. So we're talking about another year. They could start construction in 19, so it'll be '20 or '21 or '22. So anyway, somewhere in, I don't, there's a lot of things backring into that, but the site will not be ready for them until 19.
You spoke about how the non-residential was going to come once rooftops were in, but I'm really interested in employment centers and hoping to get some of these people that are buying houses employed here in Chatham County. I know that you've not made any announcements about any major tech industries or whatever, but there's still a lot of anticipation of that. Where's that schedule to fit in?
Well, most, not most, all of what is projected there from a non-residential standpoint is really more retail and smaller office. And so it's none of that type of end user that you're talking about. And most of, at least within the North Village, most of that would occur along Chatham Parkway and along this road right here. So that will, we'll start, we'll have sites that are available starting, what, in 2019? And if you look at, one of the other things that's included in these spreadsheets is an employee estimate that comes with the non-residential that's provided to the, you know, during these years. Fairly generic sort of estimate, but I think it's based on history. And we'll get to the end of this, there's about 1,200 employees that are shown, but still it's not the timing the way that you're, for the most part, I'm not going to say completely because I know we've already got one office, number one company in the office building that we're in that's more, but they're a smaller company. But anyway, those will be coming and that's the, those are exactly the kind of people we've been talking to that have been waiting for more rooftop activity. I do show at the end of, at the end of the timeline, the non-residential, although it's a little bit up in, it's not up in the air, it's just the exact timing of it. But I do show a 50,000 square foot grocery store occurring at the end of this timeline that again, has been waiting on rooftops and we would have provided those by that point in time.
What year would that be?
I have to look it up, I don't hear exactly, but I think it's '24 that I've got. Yeah. Stand at the bottom of page two, it shows 50,000 feet coming on in 2024.
Is that really heading regional?
Right.
And that's separate and apart from what might be joining into the...
That's not on the Mosaic site.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, it's a different type of, they don't have that sort of big box of grocery on that site.
And it's not South and Northwood High School there in that?
No, it would be on that site.
Oh, it would be on that?
Right. And I think they talked about that, about reserving.
Yeah.
So that Northwood Grocery is the 50,000?
Right.
The office and retail, the projections, or is it spec or is it based on the revenues?
The only, the only office in retail I show besides what has been built is within the Mosaic project. And then that 50,000, I mean, it's, I can't say much more about it than, I mean, just we're thinking we will have that kind of user by that point in time. But that's all going to be, you'll start to see site plans for Mosaic coming over the next few months. Well, I guess this first site plan will be the hotel and the apartments with the not, with the retail and office following behind that. But that'll occur over, well, over the next year, I guess, is when they will be turning in those site plans.
I want to get back to Mayor Perry's question about attracting, you know, high-tech companies and things like that. Is that something you all are still, we're still going to sit nothing?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, good grief.
Okay, thanks for...
Yeah, I mean, I hope I didn't come across this, no, no, we don't want any of them.
No, I'm not saying you wouldn't want it, but...
But no, they really, I mean, it's, obviously, there's, they can go a lot of places, but most people want to make sure that there's really going to be residential activity here. And so when we still got things hanging out there like the sewer agreements and all those things, you know, they still need to see residential activity first.
Okay. Are there further questions?
Yes. So Chuck, I think this is informative, I was able to follow. If I could ask some questions about South, 155 South with bypass. That is the North Village, but it's Cuddy Swimmer from East Street, Title II bypass?
From Thompson Street, really for the most part.
So I've heard from folks, observations of surveying along by the beach road. Can you tell us about what the plans are for phasing as regards...
Well, I'm assuming you're getting the same letters that I'm getting, asking that we not connect anything to Vinum Beach. I mean, I don't know if that's the, what's prompting the question. And the answers that I've given them, that'll be one of the last areas we get to just because if you look at the cost of extending infrastructure, that's the fartherest we can get from infrastructure. And so it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, hopscotch beyond areas that we can serve and go jump to that area. So it's going to be, that's nowhere in this timeline we're talking about. So that's, beyond that though, I don't know exactly when it is, but it's much further down the road, so to speak. But I would also say, your ordinances, our requirements, any, those roads come into our property, we are required to connect to those roads. And even, it's safer for them if they are connected to other roads. So I would, I've told them, I would never tell you we're not going to connect your, to connect our roads to yours. It's not, I don't think it's good planning, I don't think it's healthy, and I don't think it's safe. I know people would disagree with that. But that's the answer I've been giving to people. And when we get to that point where we've submitted a subdivision plan or something like that, then you guys get to weigh in and say, okay, oh, I think there are mitigating circumstances here that they shouldn't be connected, then we, you know, that'll be up to you. But anyway, that's much further away than I think most people realize.
So the surveying that's taken place is not related to any construction that's...
We do a lot of surveying, it's just related to closing property lines and big picture utilities and different things like that.
Does someone mention to me a 2023 timeline for that?
If, I'll be surprised, I mean, what we've just shown you is a 2023 timeline that doesn't go anywhere near that. Now, do things change? Yeah, we'll be keeping you up to date as those things happen, but we've got our plate full, you know, with this, with this that we showed you that doesn't come anywhere near that.
Yeah, and I'm also very eager to hear, learn more about the commercial. Honestly, I have to be candid with you, that I have heard before, that commercial would precede the residential. So this is, this is news, what I've heard.
Yeah, I don't know where you've heard that.
I've heard it from Chatham Park investors. I heard it before my campaign, and I've heard it during the campaign, I think I heard it at least two years ago.
Well, as I say, thus far it's been true.
Okay.
I mean, all we've got is non-residential and we have no residential. But the amount, again, when you're talking significant numbers, it just won't happen until you get rooftops. And I think that's, I mean, you know, we're, I mean, I can give you, I can give you, you know, the reasons why certain things should happen, but, you know, the market's going to do what the market's going to do. The traffic going down 15501 really drives a lot of non-residential wanting to be located, and it doesn't have anything to do with Chatham Park per se, it just has to do with the number of cars that go up and down 15501.
So I think of that more as commercial, but I also remember tales of industrial, light industrial headquarters, that kind of pictures. So that doesn't seem to be something that requires traffic down 15501.
Not light industrial, but it's also, and that's not the bread and butter of what we're trying to be. At the same time, I mean, we are talking to a few people, but, I mean, other people in this room can give you a lot more detail of how close we've been to signing certain people on and them backing out because they still want to wait and see what's happening with the residential. That's as clear as, open as I can be, but I don't know what else to say.
I appreciate that, Chuck, and I appreciate that there's, those are relationships you don't, you're not supposed to reveal publicly, but I remember the quote, "We want to be the RTP for the 21st century." And so that's not a lot of retail. So, you know, it's a different picture, and I'm glad we're getting this update, but it's a different picture.
But it's also a snapshot. It's not a complete picture.
Or the North Village only?
Well, for a portion of the North Village.
Okay.
And it's really for the first portion of the residential in the North Village. So there's a great deal of North Village left to go before that, before it's complete. But I think, I think there's, what, 10 million square feet planned, 7,000 homes, I think, when you look in the small, in the small area plan. So this is less than half of the, half of the residential, and it's very little of the non-residential. So it's really, again, a small portion of the North Village.
10,000 square feet of non-residential?
10 million square feet.
10 million square feet.
That I think is allowed.
And so our residential, do you want?
7,000, but that's what we show in the smaller area plan, which you haven't really looked at yet.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if there are further questions, I think this concludes our work session on the Chatham Park and Mosaic presidential plan. And Chuck, thank you for those insights. The board want to take the climate route and reconvene at 5:00, 5:07. And can we get chairs added at least on...
Good evening. This is the Town Board Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May the 29th, 2018. And as we usually do, I will ask us to start the meeting at the moment.
Jay Farrell, will you lead us in pledge?
Will everyone rise for the pledge, please?
Pledge and lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For you have the agenda before you, are there any amendments or additions to the agenda? If not, I'll ask first if there is a motion for the consent agenda, which consists of five items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but note that item one is not on our packet, and we should look at that.
Motion by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So that completes the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda? Moved by Colonel Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. First matter then for the board is our public hearing, there are four public hearings. Two of them are special use permits, and those who will recline or those persons who wish to speak to come and be sworn or stand and be sworn before giving a testimony. So those are the Howard School Tower and then the proposed daycare. The other public hearings will be not reclined, if people can speak, and they can speak up to five minutes, and the speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves. And if there is not sufficient time to complete your remarks, you're more than welcome to give those remarks to the town clerk in writing so that they can go on the public record. So is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Bette Wilson Foley, to go into public hearing, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So the first special use permit, Victoria Bayless will be leading us in the discussion. So the first special use permit, Victoria Bayless, will be leading us in a discussion, brief introduction rather, of the highway patrol tower on Fire Tower Road.
Thank you, Mayor. This is special use permit 201A-01. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety is proposing the construction of a communication tower at the end of Pittsburgh Fire Tower Road. Decided a zone are a residential agriculture, where communication towers over 50 feet in height are required to obtain a special use permit. The proposed tower is to be 380 feet in height and located in the center of the parcel. The tower is located at least 100 feet from any residence, the security sensing is eight feet in height, existing vegetation will be used for screening purposes and will be supplemented with evergreens on the northwest side. Recommendation is to hold the evidentiary hearing.
All right, and there are two people signed up for this evidentiary hearing, John Goyens and Max Casey. Those persons then need to take the oath, which, if you'll just sort of step forward and repeat after me, please. I swear or affirm?
I swear or affirm.
That the evidence I shall give?
That the evidence I shall give.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Just nothing but the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Your house and God.
So have you got it?
Thank you. The first speaker, then, John Goyens?
Yes, my name is John Goyens, I'm a civil engineer with Tower Engineering Professionals out of Raleigh. I am the engineer of record for the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Highway Patrol, and the applicant for this proposed 380-foot tower. Just like to reiterate what Victoria said about the tower, it will be on state land within the property, within the bounds of the zoning ordinance. The adjacent parcels nearby house a 400-foot tower, a 300-foot tower, as well as two other towers neighboring 200 feet. So in that vein, it's within the same, it's consistent with the existing development, nearby development. If you have any questions as far as the use, Max Casey with the Department of Public Safety Highway Patrol can give more details about the system. This tower is designed for North Carolina Viper, which is a public safety system only. It's for local law enforcement, EMS, fire, interoperability throughout the state, so it'll cover, it'll provide more coverage to the town of Pittsburgh as well as outside nearby Chatham County. And again, if you have any questions concerning this, please feel free to ask me or Max Casey.
Thank you. Max Casey?
Max Casey, North Carolina Highway Patrol Viper Group, and I'm honestly here just to answer any questions you may have.
May I ask if co-location is allowed on the highway patrol towers?
By whom would be, might ask my question for you. So co-location, yes, by other public safety entities. We shy away from co-location with for-profit agencies, so AT&amp;T, your Horizons, we don't co-locate with them, but for your public safety, absolutely. And with the co-location, when we design the tower, as long as we know that who wants to co-locate with us at the time, we will actually build the tower to the specs, so that the room is there in the build to have them co-locate with us.
So there's no upgrade?
Load bearing capacity. Correct, yes, thank you.
We're about waiting for the space.
Wait, wind mode, that's more of John, he's the engineer, and I'm just hammering now that back, so.
Well, I was thinking the same thing, and I think our SCADA system might benefit from possible co-location. For us to think about our water, sewer.
It is a possibility, absolutely. And like I said, the benefit with getting in when we initially, John initially designed the tower is, we will have ample capacity in the tower when we build it. If we wait until after the tower's already built, then there is substantial fee with that, as far as upgrading the tower and doing all the structures.
Do we have a question?
You know, I satisfied myself with the setbacks and the unlikely event of a collapse of the tower, we're all good there, but curious about lighting.
Lighting will be per FAA mandate, which is a standard medium-intensity lighting system, where it's white strobe during the day and red blinking light at night, one at mid-level at 360 feet and one at the top.
So no white strobe at night?
No.
Okay. I appreciate that reassurance.
How tall is this?
380 feet.
Okay. You said a light at 360, I love the public. That's much taller than 380. 360 is okay.
Yeah, okay. Work on that. So one of the questions I have is, I see, you know, 100-foot setback is minimal, and I think you were mentioning in your statement on the SUP that it's 215 smallest, I think, so it's within 215 feet of one of the property lines, but then in another section said the fall radius is designed so that it will not leave the property, so.
Yes, correct. When we design a tower, we can, it's, we can strengthen the tower and create a, per se, weak point at the, at the mid-level, so that in the event of a collapse, it would fold, fold, and stay within the bounds of the property.
You have a question? Thanks very much, Chairman. Next item on the agenda is the downtown overlay district. There are a number of people signed up to speak on this, to come out, and it will be introduced by our planner, Jeff Cho.
Thank you, Mayor, and from the board. Tonight we have zoning text amendment 2018-01, that's for our downtown overlay district. This is a text amendment that was initiated by the town to create some, to look at the uses that are in our downtown area. There's approximately six, five or six zoning districts between C4, C1, C2, residentially zoned zoning districts, and three properties that are zoned in one in this quarter-mile circle radius from the courthouse. Two weeks ago, we had a informational meeting where you all kind of took a look at staff's proposed ordinance. The ordinance is fairly similar to what it was two weeks ago. There was three additions that the board requested, and those additions of potential uses that might be prohibited through this ordinance was pawn shops, shooting galleries, and tobacco, alternative nicotine, and agro shops. The remaining prohibited uses are the same that we've talked about for a little while now, and the idea is that you all will hear from the public and discuss amongst yourselves as to which uses you might find that don't fit the goal of our downtown overlay, which is to create, you know, pedestrian-friendly environment that sort of excludes the automobile-related type of uses. And staff is here to answer any questions from you, but the, if the public hearing is not held over till another meeting, the idea would be for you to send it to the planning board next week, and for the plan board to have it at their meeting, and then have a recommendation to you all back at the next meeting on June the 11th for some sort of action on the proposal. But we can answer any questions that might come up, but I think you really want to hear from the public and talk amongst yourselves as to the direction of the proposed overlay district.
From a procedural standpoint, is it possible to keep the public hearing open for additional comments, either written, emailed, or whatever, or do they have to be delivered at a meeting?
I think you could always keep something open, but the next meeting you have would be July, would be the June 11th meeting, and that's, and that's when you would be taking action. You know, I think, I think you could get comments either written form or verbally tonight, that would be the law's preference on that. But if you keep it open, then it may just delay the, the ordinance itself a little bit.
Thank you.
But if we kept it open, we could continue to make modifications to it.
Yes, yeah. Modifications as to removal of potential uses that are already on the list.
Without having to re-advertise.
Right, so that's right.
So if you were to add things to the list.
Yeah, then we're going to have to start the process.
Yeah, one question. During the public hearing, if a person has a comment or a question, can we address and get an answer from you?
Oh, I think, yeah, I think you want to have a, have a back and forth between folks, and I can be here to assist through that, that process.
All right, our first speaker signed up is Chris Lee. Chris Lee, if you'd come to the center.
Mayor, I may, I may ask Mr. Lee, bear with me just a moment. I have heard a lot of scuttlebutt, as we probably all have, of the past week's concerns, and I, I think it might be helpful for the sake of the time, folks at the podium, the interest of the public, that we just clear the air a little bit about some of the misunderstandings, perhaps, that, you know, someone tell me if I'm out of line here legally or otherwise, but my, my understanding of this process is that we are not attempting to prohibit everything that is on that list, and that I want to reassure the public, is to the extent that I have had private conversations, we don't intend to prohibit everything on that list. But we do have ourselves in a situation where we've had several instances of businesses and other uses that have been proposed that shine a light on the deficiencies of our current zoning. And so we want to take quick action deliberately, carefully, but with an eye to a, in my mind, a future process that will be far more deliberate and less focused on prohibitions, and more focused on how we would like to grow and develop the town. So again, I've heard a lot of folks say, well, this list is too much, it's crazy, I don't see us passing that list. But we also had to have, for this procedure, a long list, because we can't add to that list anything after tonight without re-advertising the process, so thank you for indulging.
Remove but not add, right. Chris Lee?
Thank you all. I'm Chris Lee, 179 Hillsborough Street, and full disclosure, I'm an attorney, I'm a patent attorney, I'm also a licensed professional electrical engineer. So I just really, I put my comments into a letter and delivered it to the board, but I wanted to have a face, because I know some of you. And full disclosure again, Cindy and I used to have a loft in together, and I bought my house from Cindy. So we have, we got way back. My grandmother was born in Pittsburgh, and I love Pittsburgh. So I agree completely with what Jeff said about this being a pedestrian community, and trying to avoid adverse vehicular traffic. I think there's some spots in town that are very dangerous for anyone walking, much less persons with different capabilities. So that's the nature of my letter, and I hope you will take it under consideration. I think the proposal that is currently on the board is a little different from the conventional overlay district, as I understand it. So I've, you know, kind of proposed something a little different in there, I've offered to help, and the one thing I want to disclose, but is to say that I very much respect the burdens on you folks, you know, in the community, I thank you for taking these positions and doing that, and, you know, you understand you have to build a public record, and I just want to try to do that, Mr. Gordon, as many times as possible. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker, Billy Hughes. Billy Hughes, you'll come to the podium.
Good evening. I just have a quick question for a couple of you guys on the board. Can we get to the point and stop blowing smoke? And is this a text amendment to decide what we're going to do with Pittsburgh? Or is this a quick way to decide what we're going to do about gas stations? We still have the gas station up here? What are we going to do about it? It appears to me that we have come up with a text amendment to change downtown Pittsburgh, okay? I'm asking you from the board, what is the decision on the old board process?
Well, Mr. Hughes, if I may answer that question for you, the application that was given by Eagles, the gas station entity, was committed before, excuse me, before the overlay district was proposed, and therefore, they will operate under the old law if they choose to follow the new law.
It appears to me that we came up, all over the stuff, and came up with overlay to change everything in town because of one thing that we got going on, all right? Now, I don't want the gas station up there either, but when you read this thing that you quickly put together, there's 42 things in there that you can't have, you don't want to have, and you already got 29 of them there. So what are we going to do with that 29? Okay, I counted them off, Mike, all right? It just seems funny that we come up with a piece of property downtown, okay? We can't come up with a solution for what we're going to do with it, so now we're coming up with a democratic so-called way of fixing the system. We're going to have a text amendment, and we're not going to let them move in there. What concerns me the most, and I have sat here and watched you guys for the last six or eight months, some of you on the board are trying real hard to get us into a being sued situation, okay? I don't want to get sued, all right? You're going to keep messing with people's property rights until they're going to sue the town of Pittsburgh, okay? I know you got a little bit of power in you wannabes and all of that, all right? But you cannot take away what is already written in law and all of that. I don't care about what happens to the town of Pittsburgh. I got 10 acres, I've lived here 50-some years, it don't matter, it ain't going to change. Nothing's going to change in town until we get 40,000 people, okay? Then we're going to get Target, we're going to get everybody else. But what I do is, I caution all of you, don't get in us in a situation where somebody's going to get a lawyer. I think the world of Paul Masser, but I send $2,200 a year to Alex Jean, and I'll be damned if I want it to go toward a lawyer, all right? Y'all do what you want to.
Thank you, Billy Hughes. The next speaker signed up is Liz Collington. Liz Collington, if you'd come to the podium, please.
Liz Collington, Rocky Hills Road, Pittsburgh. I generally support the concept of a downtown overlay district, and I understand why, why you're trying to do this, and the general drift of it. you're trying to do this and the general drift of it. I'm a little unhappy with the idea of a circle. I almost would want to like, if it's going to be that size, shifted a little far north, a little to the north, but anyway, all that aside, I'm wondering if you approve this in some form with, you know, abbreviated list, if this will be added into the Unified Development Ordinance that you're working on, and if so, will the land use descriptions be updated and improved? I heard that the UDO is not carrying over the old categories unchanged. I am bothered by some of the things on the list of proposed future uses, proposed prohibited future uses, and like maybe some other people, by the number of non-conforming businesses that it would create, even if they are allowed to continue, some of which seem absolutely fine to me in their current locations, such as the Country Farm and Home Store, which I believe would become non-conforming because it sells plants. And given the zoning there and across the street, at the concrete plant, both of which are inside the circle, why were there not more uses from the M1 zoning category listed as being banned? I assume that there are quite a few. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe they're all there. Also, would the French Connection be committing outside storage as well as display if a business combines storage and display? Just sort of throw that out there. Anyway, while some of us would prefer no strip malls in that area, I gather that the term shopping center needs to be, needs to be sort of tweaked to allow several businesses to share a building, to distinguish that from the strip mall or shopping mall or whatever. Anyway, I would like to see the following uses taken off the prohibited list. Bars and taverns, I believe this was a mistake, if future our town could need and have a more vibrant nightlife. Bakeries, as in storefront bakeries should be allowed. These aren't anything like, you know, bakery factories or bottling works. I'd like to see allowed small item repair shops. Commissioner Fioke, apparently, last meeting that I attended, which this was discussed, he didn't seem to know what those were, but I remember them from my youth, and if a growing population is going to survive on this not-growing planet, we're going to have to need to fix more stuff and throw away less stuff. And some of these sort of recycling places where people come in and actually learn how to fix things are, you know, are in cool places like Portland, and so I think we should have one here. And anyway, it's hardly an offensive land use that would, you know, bring downtown down. Other things, bicycle repair shops, I don't see why we couldn't have a bicycle repair shop downtown as distinct from motorcycle repair or other things that require more parking. Could we allow just the offices for repair businesses that don't do repair on-site? We already have one business doing appliance repair, not on-site, making use of a small back section of storefront downtown. And downtown has an awful lot of unused office space, probably on second floors, that would be ideal for the basis for businesses that would not need their space to be handicapped accessible with the lift. I'd like to see indoor and outdoor live theater allowed downtown and just general performance space. But I understand it's possible some of the uses that are on the list could be allowed with a special use permit or some other sort of special planning procedure.
No.
No?
It's on the list. It's prohibited.
Ugh!
So that's part of what we want to hear tonight, is exactly what you're doing, expressing what uses you think are inappropriate to be on that list, because any of the ones you've said, I completely agree with.
Okay.
And I look forward to hearing what some of the repair is.
Well, like, we used to take our radios to be fixed, and our blenders, and our toasters, and our...
Cell phone repair.
Which, I mean, when the list of uses in the current ordinance, there were no cell phones, and apparently down south, we didn't have music performance spaces. I don't, and there's a lot of things not on that list, but yes. Yes, because I would like to see performance spaces of all kinds downtown that don't require acres and acres and acres of parking, but it appears that, you know, we either allow them or we don't allow them. So that's kind of unfortunate, but anyway. Flea markets and farmers markets are lumped together currently in the land use table. Farmers markets without a permanent structure absolutely should be allowed downtown, and in fact, I mean, there's already a farmers market inside this circle.
Liz, do you have a copy?
I'm nearly done. I've got like three sentences. Farmers markets should not be limited to one day a week, early half the year, or so. I believe they are in the draft UDO. Would the current farmers market next to Wiltwood be grandfathered in or not, or has it have an unofficial land use status with the town? I also question the business whether, although it's currently outside the circle, the annual antiques fair, would that be considered a flea market? I'd also like for us to have a bus station relatively downtown in future, when there's more bus service, including more regional bus service, with passenger waiting area, even if it doesn't have long-term bus parking, and within a relative short distance of downtown a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz, can we get, hold on there. I think one of her questions, Jeff Jones, was, are these categories going to be in the UDO?
Yeah, so the overlay will be in the UDO.
The overlay will be?
What it was about that. In this amendment, there is a new description of this overlay, and I do believe that it's not a new district, that the current descriptions of arts and whatnot have carried over to the UDO. So I don't know if it's issued with a description.
No, with the specific description of business types, which includes some mother language and some typos and things especially complicated.
I've done that. Yeah. I think the UDO does express the uses with different descriptors. So you have the zoning compliance, the zoning ordinance, it doesn't marry exactly with the UDO.
Right, right.
So honestly...
Some uses that can combine in one, or change for those, just so being larger terminology. Yeah, those happen.
So the overlay district, if it is adopted, will have to then be solided into the UDO. You can't just slap it in there.
Yeah, right. Good question now, because as we're trying to adjust all the ordinances together, that's an important part of the process. Next speaker, John Justice.
Do you guys in the back here be okay? All right, good. John Justice, Tim Crosswinds Estates Drive in Pittsburgh. How about that? You had better? Okay. I'm John Justice, Tim Crosswinds Estates Drive in Pittsburgh. I'm nostalgic for the good old days when we had a shortage of water and sewer. These problems didn't happen so often when we were able to do it that way. But it seems to me that the overlay district is being proposed in order to stop the eagle station, and maybe not, but I think you're going to open a can of worms if in fact you try to stop the eagle station from illegal use of that property. But let's assume that that's not really the intent, that you're trying to avoid any future problems that might just jump up. And I want to suggest that a better way to do that would be to work with the property owners, help them find some property uses that are acceptable to you, and be a little more collaborative about this thing. I don't know. I just don't think it's the right way to do it, is to wait for somebody brings you a proposal and then try to fight it. Doesn't seem productive to me. So I know that's going to seem a little pie in the sky to you now, and it probably is since you've already told us what you don't want in town, and that there appears to be a willingness to, maybe take is the right word, some property rights. So that's what I wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, John Justice.
I would just like to point out to everybody that at the very beginning of this document is a purpose and intent statement, and I think that is the genesis of the overlay district, and it is the basis plon wish. I look at the list of prohibited items and judge whether or not it meets the criteria of that purpose and intent statement. It is not a knee-jerk reaction trying to stop eagles.
Then the right way to do that, Michael, is with the UDO. That's the proper tool.
John, I think you're right, that the UDO would have been the best tool to use, but we've been working on it for years, and it's not in play, and at some point, you quit waiting on the perfect, and you amend something that you have because it does meet the objectives of downtown and Main Street program, and trying to keep downtown a vital place, no longer the highway business place that it was. And honestly, the C2 zoning, his name, highway business, I don't think we think that Hillsborough Street, East-West Sanford, are our highways any longer.
Then you're working on a way to get the big trucks out of town?
Yes, we are.
And you're working on a way to fix our sidewalks so they are in fact walkable?
Yes, we are. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. Work on it on a daily basis.
Okay, well, I will close by saying then that there's a significant feeling in the community that this is hurried, that it is a taking of property rights from some people to, without a good reason yet. Haven't given us enough reason to say, oh, yeah, sure, we understand that. A walkable downtown is not exactly an imminent threat. It's something that we know we need to fix. It can be fixed as soon as the UDO, or as quickly as the UDO can be fixed. So why the urgency? If it's not about this eagles, why the urgency?
It's not going to help us with the eagles.
I know it isn't. And that horse has left the barn, hasn't it?
The thing is, if we don't do something now, if we wait, then we won't be able to, when it's important to establish downtown as a desirable place to come.
I think a lot of people are not going to agree that you picked the right way to do that, so just an FYI, I suppose. Thank you.
Thank you, John Justice. The next speaker is Phil Whitley. Phil Whitley. This person lives at 305 Polley Glen Road. We'll come back and see if that person has come back into the room. Wanda Hudgens.
Hey, Wanda. Hey. What were you thinking? I got the letter in the mail. I'm from Pittsburgh, most of you guys probably know me. And I'm... You speak up. We can hear you. I'm sorry. I'm a very loud speaker, so. Anyway, I grew up in Pittsburgh, and I own the property at 157 East Salisbury Street. And the reason I came in when I got this letter is I wanted to find out what the overlay actually meant, and I think I heard that said a few minutes ago, the more of a beautification part of downtown Pittsburgh, more desirable, is that one of your words? I couldn't hear you back then.
More vibrant.
Right.
To make sure that as we have more growth outside, that downtown is still a place that's a harvest.
Right. The reason I came in tonight is because my concern is, I bought my old home place where I grew up from my mother, she's 88, and I bought the home place from her to revitalize it, completely remodel it, and then all of a sudden, we get, well, I already had the car wash there, which has been there since I was a child, but then we get the hand wash car wash, and the guy is down there with a, and I understand people have to make a living, but there's a guy down there, and he's with a Victor, he's got signs all over town, which I think is an eyesore, so I'm just going to speak my piece here. I think it's an eyesore. Number two, the pressure washer that he's got going, I think if you had OSHA to come in and listen to it, because when I'm standing in the kitchen or in the middle part of the house, the house is vibrating because the thing is so loud. And he said, I said, can't you put like a muffler on it, or either put it in some type of, some kind of container, actually motor parts and run the hose out, so you don't have as much noise? And then, so that's the one thing, is that that noise will happen. The second thing is that my husband's been in tire business for years, for over 20 years, and I know that you're not supposed to have tires sitting out, and I now've got tires across the street from me. And tires, when you catch, you've got water, you've got mosquitoes, it's going to cause rats, snakes, all kinds of stuff. So we really don't need a tire business unless the tires are going to be inside a building. And I know that they've been working on it, they've been working on it for about three or four months now, and it's just, it's an eyesore. And then you go up the street a little ways where Valladonna used to be, and you've got all kinds of old cars that's sitting there, and it's just, downtown is not pretty at all. It's, you know, and so if we want it to look nice and pretty, we're going to have to all just start taking better, whoever is, whoever is in charge of going around and making sure that the ordinances are taken care of, they need to go around and make sure it's taken care of it. And when I went to the planning board, I'm sorry, I was told there's not enough people out to go out and talk about this stuff, and to make sure that all this stuff is getting done. So I was going to remodel my old home place and move there because I want it to be back in downtown Pittsburgh, and I want it to look pretty. And I've got lots of ideas if people want to hear me, but, you know, I just think we need to already, you know, have some control over what's down there already and make things look nicer. So that's what brought me in, is because I just think we really need to work on that. There's a lot of improvements can be done. So that's my say.
Thank you, Wanda. Pat Harris is the next person signed up to speak. Pat.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you all be...
No.
Louder, I can be loud.
That's good.
My name is Pat Harris, and I live at 56 East Salisbury Street, which is within your L overlay. Now, I'll have to, I would like to reiterate what John Justice just said. You are causing a lot of concern from property owners downtown. Some of your zoning are so broadly stated, we don't know what is in them or what isn't. And for example, the commercial controlled, whatever, you decide what is in that zone. Is that correct?
Each zoning district...
C4.
Yeah, each zoning district has a list of uses that are permitted in the district.
But they're not in this list.
What this list says, or what this ordinance says, is if the use is allowed in the base district, C4, and it's not allowed in this overlay, and that property is... district, C4, and it's not allowed in this overlay, and that property is in a C4 district within the overlay, then it's not allowed. If the overlay does not prohibit it, then it changes nothing about the current zoning ordinance, absolutely nothing. So, if it's a permitted use today, the overlay doesn't say it's not permitted, then it's a permitted use.
Not sure I understand that, but anyway, I am in the C4 area. My home is. And there are several properties around me that are in the same situation. I wonder particularly about Ms. Wilson's comment about beautification of our downtown area. You're stepping on the toes of a lot of people that are property owners, that are going to be extremely upset about the zoning plans that you have here, and what you can and what you can't do. But Ms. Wilson mentioned beautification, and I should have said to begin with that, my comments are short, but they're not going to be too sweet, as far as this ordinance is concerned. If you want to beautify Pittsboro, and I don't know who is on the planning board, or who is planning the beautification part of this overlay, but if you look at the water park that is supposed to have been, is that a part of your beautification plan? That is the most horrendous looking thing I've ever seen. I mean, it is ugly to use the water garden.
Oh, and the rain garden.
Or the rain garden, whatever it's called. How in the world, from the picture of that, and I was on the committee, to draw this up, how in the world they ever came up with what they built, is beyond me. It is totally, do you think it's beautiful? I think it's horrible. And every shop down there, those shop owners are so disgusted and disappointed with the whole thing. So, to me, if you want to beautify Pittsboro, I think you'd better find some other people to do it.
I should agree. As someone who lives in the overlay district, are there things on it, so I'd be interested to know-
I hear you.
I'd be interested to know which of the things listed that you might not want next to your house. You know, that's what we're looking at.
That's the more question here.
You know, what, of all these listed things, I would really love to hear what you're okay with having next door to you, and which things aren't. Like, would you be okay having some of these things next door to your house? Because that's what we're trying to look at, trying to make the downtown desirable and a pleasant place to be.
What I would like to have next door to my house, I don't understand how that is even at all a relevant statement, because people don't live downtown. Now, I call downtown Hillsborough Street. That is your basic downtown area, unless you plan in the future to take that quarter-mile circle and totally decimate everything in there and make it downtown.
Downtown will have, hopefully, ideally, have people living in the downtown as well as in the, but it's just something to think about, like what you're comfortable with having next door to you. It's just something to think about.
Well, when I walk downtown, I really don't see anything that's there that I'm comfortable, uncomfortable about living next to. I live right in back of Early's Restaurant, and that's pretty downtown. But when I get a little scared, when I look at that water garden, and see what you have done there, and think to myself, "You've beautified Pittsboro."
Well, I'm curious. I'd like to elaborate on Commissioner Foley's question, Ms. Harris. Would you like an adult bookstore next door to your house?
An adult bookstore?
It could happen. It's so commercial.
It could happen under our current zoning.
Under the current zoning?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
This is what we're trying to fix.
How could it happen?
It's legal. It's allowed.
I'm in a commercial zoning area that is called C4, which says it is a controlled-
Commercial.
So, if it is a controlled commercial, you have control. Am I right?
No.
Now, so who has control? Yeah, it's controlled.
That's why we're about this process.
There's a lot of misunderstanding about what this is. If it's a commercial business, for example, Eagle Gas Station, if it's a legal business and it's allowed by the zoning, we can't stop it. We can't stop, right now, if someone wanted to build a massage parlor next to your house, we couldn't stop it, even if we didn't want it, because it's an illegal business, and we're not allowed to stop it.
So, what does your controlled commercial, this C4 mean? What does that mean?
Well, there is, within the zoning ordinance, there is an item called a table of permitted uses. And therein, it cross-references a use with a zoning district. And if massage parlor, let's say, or adult bookstore is a permitted use in the C4 district, then if it meets all the other ordinance requirements, then it has got to be approved.
Well, then you need to change the C level.
That's part of what this is doing.
Well, then I understand that.
Okay.
But don't you think that's a pretty simple thing to do, without having to involve everybody else that's in your sort of order?
Well, what we're trying to do is rewrite all of our codes. And we've been working on that for a couple of years, and it's not quite ready. But we see that there are certain things that can happen in the downtown district that could cause harm for many, many years to come, and we're deciding to act and not wait on the UDO to be, et cetera, perfect. So, this is an interim step. This is really trying to get, disallow those uses that we think would be very harmful downtown, because again, the C2 zoning is called highway business. Highway business. So, it wants to have those types of uses that are associated with a highway. And we don't think of our downtown as a highway any longer. It has got two major state roads going through it, 1551 and 64. But 64's got a bypass, and we're trying to get a bypass around downtown for the trucks. We're trying to get a bypass around, function as a bypass for 1551. But I don't think we can wait. And so, we've got a downtown vision plan. This goes towards that vision plan. It talks about improvements to Hillsborough Street, Sanford Road, the East and West Streets. It talks about making these improvements. And this is a component of trying to make the downtown that vital, livable area. Because that's what we're trying to do. And so, we've got a long list of things that we say are prohibited. And as I said when Liz was talking, many of these I don't think need to be prohibited, because I think they do meet the criteria of the purpose and intent statement. So, what we're doing is trying to put an overlay on the town that will survive into the UDO and make for more vibrant downtown.
It's really interesting to hear what things we'd like to see removed, because that helps us to know which things people of Pittsboro want to keep in the downtown, because some of these things, you probably agree, you don't necessarily want in our downtown. But some of these you do. So, it would be really great to hear what people do on these things they want.
Just send it to the list. And what we're trying to actually do is actually get a vision for downtown. And what do you- What do you call downtown? We're doing this, we're considering, we're looking at the overlay right now. That is your downtown. Not totally, but the part that we are going to try to determine what uses we need in that overlay. That's what we're doing here. Now, what is your vision in terms of that particular overlay as related to these uses which are listed here? Once we have that particular information, then we will go forward and review all of that, and make a determination. But we need the input from the public, so that they can say, "Oh, yes, we like this here. We don't like this one here. We want you to add this one," so forth and so on. So, that's the purpose that we want to do. That's what we're trying to do. Yeah, but let me just say this. I can understand what your vision is, but it doesn't encompass that entire area. Downtown is never going to be that entire area, never. Oh, someday it will be. Well, you and I won't be here. Well, we might not be, but my property is in there just as much as yours is, Pat. And I don't want a movie theater next to me. I don't want a massage parlor. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
One other item that is part of this whole discussion is the boundary. If you think the boundary's too big, we can hear that.
All right. The next speaker, Henry Hatton.
Good evening. My name is Henry Hatton. Now, I own property in the circle. And anybody want to buy is for sale. I'm for that. But that's why I'm here. I'm thinking about the African church right now, the black church. That's the Hain Hardes. That's my church. And we own property up right there at the street, all the way back, that goes back. And what we are concerned about is the enlargement. Now, when you do your overlay, does that mean we're not going to be able to enlarge our church? Is that the end of that? Or are we not going to be able to build on the other side? We own property also on the other side of the street. Are we not going to be able to build on that side? This is what I'm wondering, because this may not look right for some people, but it's still my church property. And we do hope to enlarge that property. But right now, you have like 10 people in there, so you ain't got to worry about it. But in the future, hopefully, you will have it to worry about. And we'll have it to worry about, hopefully, but if we ain't got nothing downtown with bars and scripts, you ain't even have it to worry about. You know, if that's all you're going to have uptown, if that's all you're going to let in, is bars, you know, and script, script shots, something like that, if that's all that's coming.
Now, if that's not all.
Well, if that's all that's coming, it's not going to matter. But we would like to know if we're going to be able to enlarge our church property, not only ours, but the United Methodist has already got plans to enlarge. But y'all going to stop that? Oh, okay. Okay, well, that's our concern. That's our concern, about black church, that I never had a heart. Now, I'm saying, that's our concern, we have. And that's why I just wanted to address.
You're probably not alone in not wanting churches to be on that list. So, that's helpful to have your feedback, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all come to church suddenly, won't you?
Our next speaker, Kim Kitchen. Kim?
Hello. My name's Kim. I own the property at 140 East Salisbury Street. And I had submitted a letter to you, I guess maybe two weeks ago, that you may have received. And I just talked about first, I think that there are some needed regulations and things that are coming in, so I appreciate all that you've done for that. Some concern that I had is there were a lot of things that were prohibited. And when I looked at that, I couldn't understand what was allowed. So, my question for you is what do you see for extended retail or other things that can be allowed?
So, you'll have to go to the zoning ordinance, and again, to that table of permitted uses. And that will tell you within which zoning district which uses are allowed, whether they're allowed, the phrase is by right, which means you just meet the standards and it's allowed to be used that way, or if it's a special use permit, which is a more involved permitting process. But so-
So, we're in C4. We own 4 acres, right down there, one block down from the Harrisons' mothers. And what it said though on the prohibited list was that all other retail uses prohibited. And I didn't know what that meant. I mean, I would think that if you want this to be a driven place for people to walk, I'll say this, we're being built on Thompson Street, you're going to want some type of commercial enterprises or something to attract people. So, my question is, what will that be? What's your vision? And I read the vision, please.
The purpose and intent statement?
I read that. But also the vision, I think you had that maybe in 2014?
Yes.
But it still didn't outline. You know, what does that look like to you?
Well, that's the purpose of this public hearing, is to find out what you want to be allowed in that quarter, eight mile circle downtown. What do you envision that you want for the investment that you've made, which is a very important investment to us? And right now, the zoning regulations are so loose and so uncontrolled, that we're seeking your advice about what you want here.
Now, in the letter that I had sent to Ms. Lloyd, I had stated a few things, such as maybe high-end antique stores, children's boutiques, high-end dressing stores. There are many things that we don't have in Pittsboro that you have to go at least 30 miles for. So, when you look at that development, my question is, I don't see anything like that listed. You walk downtown, there's some lovely shops, I think, a lot of lawyers and other things now, but, you know, what are we doing to develop that commerce that you talked about in the purpose and intent statement? And that's my question, again. And I think a lot of people feel like that about what's prohibited, but we want to see what's possible. That's a lot more hope than, I think, the restriction.
I thank you very much. And I feel moved to repeat again what I started, what I tried to offer in as opening comments. I don't like focusing on the negatives. I really don't like focusing on prohibitions. I am very eager, and it's my conviction that we will, as quickly as possible, after we've attended to a number of priorities that we've already set in policymaking, we need to set policies that incentivize the kinds of developments that we do want within that circle, or whatever other boundary we as a town decide. And it will be, in my dream, locally owned businesses. It will be the kinds of reuse that you envisioned. It will be vibrant commerce that I cannot imagine. And in order to do that, we have to move away from prohibitive language. We have to think in terms of positivity and enticement and incentivizing and lowering barriers to redevelopment and reconstruction. But that is a far more difficult policymaking challenge. And I am motivated by what has happened and what may happen at the old Ford dealership. I've lost sleep over it. It makes me sick to my stomach. There's a possibility that we might have a facility coming into this town that will be essentially an incinerator. So, I'm very motivated by that. I'm motivated to do what I can to help us preserve what's wonderful and marvelous about this community, while also encouraging the kinds of development that we as a community decide we want. And so, that's, again, why we need to focus on this list, for now, of prohibitions, and those things that we can all agree on. And when all agree we don't want adult bookstores, then let's be done. Let's move on to the next topic.
If you like to focus on that list, and one of the things listed that I thought was confusing is you go through and you talk about adult entertainment and bookstores and other things. I don't have it in front of me, but then you have in parentheses, "Except adult entertainment." Or, I don't understand what that means. To me, that means things we certainly don't want. So, I think you got to take that out. So, I think there's some things like that that could certainly be cleared up. I agree wholeheartedly with the gentleman before me about the churches. I can't imagine you would limit churches. I realize we have quite a few in a small area, but I don't think you could do that. And also, and I think you changed this, but I had sent something about playgrounds. You do have that small park, but an urban area that you aspire to, you've got to have a place for children to come and play, and we don't have that. So, I think there's some things there, again, that's on the list that I don't see, but I don't know that it's banned, that I just don't see it all. So, I'd like to see something in the future that shows what we are going to allow, and to help people when they're coming in, to guide them with the decisions, and maybe new business owners to come in to, to develop.
Also, Kim, also in this, it's also, we're hoping to allow some identity development in this area, but it's not all just retail. You know, we can get some identity development.
You mean identity residential?
Yes.
That's of course it is, but the-
That's the force of it, with the people that walk in, just that you don't care any. Yeah, I know where about four acres are.
There's something about it right there.
Kim, there is a program that we have in Pittsburgh called the Main Street Program. And it is endeavoring to recruit certain businesses to fulfill that vision. And if you are interested at all in participating, we would love to have you join us. And if I could get, oh, I've got your contact information, so I'll reach out to you. Because I want to say economic restructuring is part of the process and marketing your downtown to businesses is part of this process. So we'd love to see if you would like to join us.
Yeah, thank you. In fact, I was Victoria today, if there was a chamber, because I had not seen that for Pittsburgh, other things have been involved in Cary and somewhat in Durham. So I think there's some opportunities there for all of us in Pittsburgh to grow. And I grew up here too.
Thank you.
And Chip Kitchen, the next speaker.
Who? I think we thought that was a sign in. I didn't realize I was speaking either, and he's not planning to speak, I don't think. Unless you want to, honey. I don't think that one.
The next speaker signed up is Vicki Odom. Vicki?
Hello. How are you? Hello. Thank you for caring about Pittsburgh, first of all. I've spent over half my life working in the downtown area. I want to see it revitalized. I want to see it grow. I think what I hear from some of the people here is some fear that we are going to be regulated or told what we cannot or can do with our businesses. For instance, tell me this, the Main Street Program, love that. Look what you've done for the storefronts. Thank you for that. But tell me this. If I am a landlord and I want to rent a gym, fitness center is on the list. Is that prohibited?
It is prohibited if it's on the list.
It is on the list. It is currently downtown.
Right.
So if she moves out, I can't rent that to another business person, correct?
If it's vacant for six months, then it could not be if it's on the list.
Okay. If it's vacant for less than six months, yes.
Correct.
All right. Then, the second thing I guess I have a question about is, if I want to have a special use permit or a permit, what is the process? How do you get the permit? Is there a fee? And what is the timeline and requirements?
Depends on what type of program.
Yeah.
Honestly.
Okay. All right. Just for instance, I want to put a bakery. I don't want to do a bakery. I don't want to do anything that's more than I'm doing now. Okay, I know, I'm lazy. But, okay, say I wanted to put a bakery and bakery's on the list. And someone comes to me, I want to rent your property, I want to put a bakery there. What happens? Do I come to the town and ask for permission? Do I let the potential renter get tired of being, of waiting? I don't understand the process. Could you tell me?
Could we have a quick overview of that, Jeff Jones?
So if the list is just a prohibited use and somebody wants to.
Could you stand up?
Could you stand up?
So if it's prohibited list, then you would have to petition the town to remove that from this list.
And how do you petition the town?
Go through a text amendment there. So be associated with that, hold a public hearing just like this and.
And the time, time amount?
Could take three to four months currently.
And meanwhile, that person may go somewhere else because they don't want to be bothered with this?
I mean, that's a business decision that you make.
And that's true. Okay. All right. I'm definitely for the good of the town. I have as a business owner actually, or a property owner, taken some of these things on the list and not rented to these things before because I want it to be something good for the town. So I still don't understand. It seems like a long time. Do you, do you think it's a long time? Or is it a fair process? Is this what happens in other towns?
This tax amendment process?
The ability to rent your property to whom you would like and what you would like to put in that space.
This zoning regulations occur in all towns in North Carolina. So yes, this type of process does occur in all towns. Many towns are far more restrictive and cumbersome than Pittsburgh. Some are even more streamlined than Pittsburgh.
So if I were, if I went to Apex, I would also go through a special permit to get everything done, correct?
You would get a permit of some sort.
I got a permit to do business here in town, but we just came to the town and applied for it and was given it immediately. There was no time.
Privilege license?
Yes.
Yeah. That has nothing to do with.
Nothing to do with that, maybe.
But just a permitted use. That would be two days at most to get a.
And whom approves the use?
The uses are in the ordinance. I can't make up uses. They're either in the ordinance or they're not.
Right. And who here at the town approves or disapproves?
The town board. Oh, a permit? That would be staff.
Yeah. The planning department would, if it's not on the list of prohibited uses, then you go see these folks and they'll, and they'll put you, put you right in. There's no, there's a review of the site plan and that's it.
Will that cause empty storefronts, do you think?
We certainly, it's not our intention to do that.
I hope not.
I hope not.
It's not, I'd like to see a lot less of the office kind things that are on.
And more retail?
And more retail.
And more different businesses as well.
Apex has been very successful at doing that. But the problem is, we can't ask lawyers and insurance companies and dance studios to go to the side streets when we'd like to perhaps have other uses there. So it's a, it's a complex process that has a lot more give and take than you would imagine. And thank you, John Justice, for the idea of collaborative. And it, we already do that in many respects, but.
I think many different businesses bring people to the town. I know my daughter-in-law has a dance studio, but she didn't view for evidence?
I don't recall whether that's on the.
I don't think it's on the list. Churches was a surprise as well. I was glad that was on there. Okay. And I don't know who said it, but I'm all for fixing up the streets and getting the handicapped disabilities. So many people have fallen on our streets and been hurt. And I've put one too many ice packs on some elderly people. So I'd like to see that as well. Please keep me informed.
Vicki, thank you. I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Which ones, other ones on this list would you like? I know you.
Like to have removed?
Yes.
Like to have removed?
Or like for them to, yeah, like to have them removed?
I think when Ms. Cullington says a small repair. I think I go back to the time when I was a little girl in Main Street and I saw people, I saw the leather shop. I saw the seamstress. I saw the repair shop.
Cleaner?
Clean market, clean markets and farmers markets. We all love things like that. Or perhaps massage parlor, I really don't want that. That doesn't have anything to do with the spas, right? Okay.
And Ms. Vicki, are you okay with licensed or certified massage therapists?
Yes, of course. Theater. Locksmiths, not so much with guns. Let me see what the other one was. There were several. Daycare facility. I think that has a place, but not in the downtown area.
And if you could.
That's something you'd like to keep, something like.
The list of the, of those kinds of things that are on, that you feel strongly about.
Do you like to see stayouts that should all be removed on this list so that it's allowed?
And you as board members, what do you see for Pittsburgh? What do you want? We need to, like Mr. Piotka said, we need to attract small businesses.
And I'm not going to do a small business.
I do too.
And owners that live here, owners that are committed to this community. And so artsy, something that keeps our culture. And what we know in Pittsburgh is culture. We don't want to be like all the other towns.
That's why people come here, because we're different.
And that's what, to me, that's what we're trying to protect, is keeping Pittsburgh forward culture. It may not be perfect, but we're doing our best to try to get it right. And that's why we're doing it. A lot of things that I don't want to have.
I was horrified when I saw some of that. Oh, my God. So far, the churches have to?
No. That's probably scared a lot. The first time I saw this was, whoa. And I think a lot of people are worried about this list that we're going to, we don't want to keep all these things. And we really do want to hear from people about which things do we want to allow? Like, we don't expect to approve all of these things. You know, I could get you to talk about some of the ones I think should be off of here. I love farmers markets and I love, you know, a lot of things, like having theater in downtown.
I did too.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of things. I think people will be able to exercise and do other things. Like bakeries, I love having, I love to have our bakery sometimes.
I did too.
So things like that. Yes, it's just your list of things that you would like to see us take off this list.
And.
Do you know about downtown Pittsburgh?
I want to keep it final. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Our last speaker signed up is Lee Sullivan.
Hi, Lee Sullivan, and I'm here representing the Pittsburgh Presbyterian Church. And we would like to request that you take church off of the list. Because that'll keep it open. And if a church wants to expand or one wanted to come in, there's not much space for them to come in. But if one wanted to expand, they shouldn't have a lot of difficulty and issues. And so we respectfully ask that you remove churches from the list. And I feel like that's the only thing that I'm qualified to speak about because I live outside of town. But I'm just here to represent the church, the Pittsburgh Presbyterian Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you, Lee. I think you'll see that removed.
When we went through the list, we did not have Phil Whitley in the room. Is Phil Whitley here with us? If not, then that completes the matter of the public hearing for this particular item.
Mayor, I just, I wanted to say one thing about some of the things we've heard tonight. One being bakeries. That is not proposed to be prohibited. There's two distinct bakeries. One is a large-scale wholesale bakery that is proposed to be prohibited. But the other that we had downtown would be permitted and would continue to do so. We have bakeries on site sales. So that is not something that is currently on the prohibited list. Clothing sales, that would be permitted in downtown in the Seaford District. That's not on the prohibited list. Antiques and retail gift shops, that is not on the prohibited list. That is something that's permitted and would continue to be so. So I just wanted, why people were here to say, there was three uses that people said, why aren't we, why, where are those at? And specifically bakeries, why is it on here? Because there's different things. The retail not otherwise listed is on here because that leaves someone like myself or others in my role to interpretation that could allow, give a permit to someone for a retail use that we may not want. And it's a typical old way zoning ordinances were written that covered things that can't list every use. So you would list things like manufacturing not otherwise listed, or retail not otherwise listed, or wholesale not otherwise listed. I think our ordinance does that. And so what would, what would happen in that, under that category is that someone would apply for a permit. And staff would have to make an interpretation if that use, that proposed business, fit generally within the prohibited, the permitted uses that are already in that zoning district. So what it does is it leaves staff for interpretation. And if this board is about, you know, limiting interpretation as to what the uses are, that's why that use is there, not to prohibit retail, but it prohibit to have a way to say, we don't want interpretation to be a part of decision-making. It either is or is not this particular use. So that's why that use is listed there. Y'all can, y'all can remove it, that's fine. But that's why it was there.
And so if we remove it, then that would give staff the opportunity to allow and permit a use that isn't specifically listed in the permitted uses.
Yes. If it is not specifically listed.
Something strange, new, novel, and uninvented or undescribed.
That's right.
Could come in if you approve.
That sort of was similar in intensity and use of something that was already permitted in that zoning district. And staff could say, I think that fits within this personal service category or something like that. That, staff could give that permit to them. So there could be a reason to remove it from the list.
Madam Mayor, can we ask Jeff a question?
Sure.
As an example.
I'd like to just follow up on that statement.
Okay.
Because Jeff, I think the fact that we have uses currently on the books, retail businesses not otherwise listed, we've got it. It happens.
Yeah.
You don't have a choice. You have to make a judgment call.
I would make a judgment call unless it's black and white, I would hardly make that judgment.
We've also got wholesale establishments not listed.
Right.
The code requires you to use that judgment.
That's right.
And so having it as part of the overlay versus the base district, you know, I'm okay. Because honestly, I think retail is the kind of thing we want downtown. So for me, I say remove it from the list.
Remove it from the list of prohibitions, allowing staff to make those interpretations.
Well, staff have.
Got you. Maybe you want to take.
Lenny Jacobs had a question for you.
So Jeff, can we ask you a question that might help to clarify some of this?
Okay.
If the Pittsburgh Bread Company were to burn down, which they do, bake wholesale bread, and by the way, they make the best black Russian bread you've ever eaten, would they be allowed to rebuild because they are very definitely inside that circle?
Right. So I think that's the one business that would fall under a bakery and with bottling works. We could look at it as something where it's bakery, I don't know if, do they do retail sales on site?
They do, not. But if you're catering something and you need a lot of bread, they will let you go in there and buy that. But as a general rule, they do not sell to the public, at least they did.
So that, that's the one business that would be affected by that prohibition on that particular bakery, wholesale bakery use.
So perhaps a way to handle that type of thing is to look at how long they've been here, what kind of business they have done for the town, which has been a very good business for the town, and have a way to make an exception for those types of businesses. Also.
Let me, let me stop you right there. Right now, that's not a permitted use in Seaford. And it must have been permitted under just the general bakery definition, which we would continue to honor, you know, as long as it was there.
So there needs to be language there that says that you would continue to honor that.
I would have to find their permit from whenever, if they got it.
Or good luck.
Right. Right. They may not have.
Because I don't think any of us were born when that place opened. And the other thing is the theater. Now, those of you who were not born prior to World War II probably don't remember this, but Pittsburgh had a beautiful theater that burned down. And are you saying that if somebody were to come in and feel something of that equal quality that could be walked to downtown, you would not allow that?
I would like to remove it from the list. And I think other commissioners might also want to remove it from the list.
Small artsy theaters, you know, I can see that downtown, not the big Metta Theater.
No, not the big Metta Theater. But Cary has revitalized their theater and they are doing an awesome business. And they have spent millions revitalizing that thing. And they have spent millions revitalizing that thing. So, just to say that somebody wouldn't go into the historical records, find a picture of the Pittsburgh Theater, and recreate that day, that would be nothing but a jewel to the Pittsburgh skyline. So, don't, don't limit it. Those are the kinds of things that are prohibited on this list that all of us are concerned about.
So, unfortunately, sometimes zoning is worst-case scenario. We have to figure out what the town does not want. And that's what the commissioners have been imploring you all to tell them, what don't you want in downtown? Because if it's permitted, they're going to be inclined to say yes, because they're going to meet all the standards of the ordinance, most likely. So, yes, we all agree that that historical theater would be lovely and be wonderful. But if it just says theater permitted, someone could build a 50,000-square-foot theater in downtown on the Old Ford dealership.
Right, but you could actually limit that within your ordinance.
But you, not in this ordinance.
Well, then this ordinance maybe needs to go back to what John said, becoming part of the UDO, and the UDO getting ramped up.
Okay, so this is, this is a, an approach that will have many iterations throughout its life of the overlay district. If we don't want a 50,000-square-foot movie theater in downtown, it may be in our best interest to say, that's prohibited right now. Doesn't say this list will never be addressed again in the future. It may just need to be addressed whenever we have tools in the toolbox that we can say, we want it to look like this. But if I can't, if a permit comes across my desk for a theater tomorrow for 50,000 square foot, I'm going to put it into the review, and these people might be inclined to say yes.
Yeah, because they have your approval. We cannot say no.
So, we could.
Well, you did. You sent those to Eagles. And I agree with you. I, the last thing I want to do is look down the street from my office and see a flipping truck station there. So, but it, you know, it's going to buy you a lawsuit if it hadn't already.
Well, the reason it was denied was a valid reason. It did not meet the standards of the ordinance.
Right. And that, and that's a good thing that you can use that.
But they reapplied, and they fixed the problem. So, next time, we may not, we may not be able to say no.
Exactly. So, that goes back to the idea that the ordinance needs to be very well-written, and this is the opportunity to do it.
That's why the UDO has taken a couple of years, and is still in the works. But honestly, Jeff, we could have a use, theaters greater than 20,000 square feet.
Exactly. Exactly. You could exactly do that.
We could have, we could have drafted it that way. Yeah.
So, it's on the table, we could.
Right.
So, that's part of this whole process, considering what the community wants.
That's right.
Can we do, can we do the same thing for like the gyms? Instead of like Gold's Gym, like large gyms, or small things?
Yeah, yes. I think that was my advice to the board, is fitness centers on the list, but you may want to say fitness centers under 10,000 square feet, or under 5,000 square feet, is what we want. But we do not want a 50,000-square-foot Gold's Gym, or O2 Fitness in our downtown. We do want that in town, but we just don't want it in downtown.
Right.
Um, so there's caveats that have to be sort of looked at, um, once we get to further iterations of this overlay district, which will include not only uses, but could include things like extra, you know, with building materials, building heights, setbacks, things that will actually create that pedestrian-friendly environment that we want to see. This is just the first shot at it, and it's going to accomplish a goal, one of the goals of this overlay district, which is to look at our uses, and what uses don't we envision in Pittsburgh, in our, in that quarter-mile radius. We can always come back and look at it again, but it does, if this is not acted on in some, you know, in short time, there could be other things like Eagles that come to town.
They could get a fourth or a fifth gas station proposed within this circle.
So, so Pittsburgh is, is definitely on folks' radar to develop, and we meet multiple developers every week wanting to move to Pittsburgh, because this is going to be a good place to be for them and as a business. And if I can't say no to someone, and it doesn't fit our vision, I have to, have to accept and review and bring it to this board. It's just the way it is. But if we have this overlay district that allows this layering approach of, you can have certain things, but not everything that's in C-4, then that's, that's our best approach at the moment. We can, we can convene after this is passed and, you know, study it more. I think the Main Street folks are going to continue to study it, um, and I, I think we should do that. But right now, I believe this board is just moving in a direction to prohibit some of these uses. Not all these uses, but some, because they don't fit within our downtown area.
Jeff, how, how long are you open for email comments?
Yeah, you know, I, I think this has been out in the open for a while. We notified folks of the, of the informational meeting two weeks ago. We notified folks of this meeting. Uh, that's up to the board, whether they want to keep the public hearing open. Um, it, you know.
I have one comment. I know we, everybody has been, um, working on these, these prohibitions and all, just nobody has really spoken on the boundaries. Um, Jeff made a good comment just a minute ago, it kind of brought my attention. The Main Street boundaries, we have it, like block to block, squared. Bill, it's kind of, it's not a circle. It goes from.
It's this red outlined area.
It's a red outline.
Yeah.
Personally, I feel like that should be our overlay district. And that's just my point of view, but, uh, that's something I think we should look at instead of this round circle that, that may have a piece of property in, and may not have it 100 feet up in there.
Right.
I think we should use our streets, blocks, and square overlay district of where everybody will, will be aware of where their property and everything is, and narrow it down a little bit.
Uh, Jay, I agree. Um, and part of my rationale is, I was surprised to see how much property south of the circle. I mean, it probably goes a half a mile when it touches Horton.
Right. It's such a large piece of property.
Yeah, I mean, because when it clips any little piece of it, it grabs the entire parcel, which does, I mean, Horton goes a long way down, and, you know, there are certain things that I, I think belong on this list in my idea of downtown. I think athletic fields probably don't fit in downtown. However, and I think, um, was it Henry who was talking about churches and the ability to expand and being non-conformity? We talked about non-conformities that they burned down. Well, if we have athletic fields as a disallowed use, and Horton Middle School is in the district, then they can't expand their fields.
Yeah, I think, I think how I, let's, I would interpret that as school is allowed in that, and we're not prohibiting it, and that's accessory, that's an accessory use to that school. But I, I, if you all want to amend the circle, definitely could be under consideration.
I, I think the Main Street boundary is a pretty good boundary, because it's where we wanted to focus our efforts on really being a historic, vibrant downtown. And so, for me, I'm more, I, I think it's more appropriate for the Main Street boundary than the circle. I think the circle just reaches a little bit too far.
Yeah, I think one, it was an idea of how far does it go? This is how far it reaches, about 260 parcels.
Speaking of which, if you actually live in downtown, Shadow Mill, would you like to include that order?
And that can be part of the, uh, that can be part of the ordinance. If we continue on the path of June the 11th, once you get to June the 11th, you could say, stated on the Main Street boundary as of 2018.
Because it's actually less parcels.
It would be less.
So, so the public hearing wouldn't have to be redone. Okay. All right. All right. Are we ready to move to the next item? The question, the inquiry was about holding it open for an email comment?
Well, I'm, I'm curious about process.
Comments. I mean, I think there's a lot of confusion and maybe a little unrest about it. And I think any option we can take to, to clear this up, I'd like for us to do that. And honestly, I don't know if tonight is the night, or if we asked you tonight, but if we're in town, I think I want to say in the public hearing, the uses that I think need to be restricted from this list.
I don't think there's any procedural issue with it going to the planning board next week. And you all continuing with the public hearing to the, June the 11th, you would have planning board's thoughts while the public hearing is still open, and that may give you more, if the, you know, they may be able to say, these 20 uses, we've got to keep. We don't, we haven't really gotten to that point yet. And, oh, by the way, if we had our druthers, we would have added these other things too. But we don't have that. So, those are, that's information that you all are going to want to, want to see and hear, and I think if you keep.
Even if we couldn't use it on this occasion?
Right.
The addition, the additional ideas.
Yes, yes. Um, and I don't think there's anything that says that you couldn't close the public hearing on June the 11th and act on June the 11th.
That's policy, but we can.
But, but would you be able to prepare the ordinance properly for passage on the 11th?
Um, I think you all could have, we could have it pretty much ready, and if there's things that are, you know, if there's a use that gets struck that night, then we just strike that use. Yeah.
I just don't want, that's to, uh, pretty nice to understand.
When we get down to what changes might be made, it's going to be striking uses, um, and not necessarily in the description or anything like that. So, it's really, uh, you would have, I make a motion to approve downtown overlay with the following uses struck from the prohibited list. Essentially how, how the motion would go. And then we would craft the ordinance, uh, the written part after that. Okay.
All right. Do we need a nursing then to hold this public hearing, open until June the, hello?
Second.
Move then, Michael Fierker, seconded by, that will conformly, there's a favor, please can keep my thing, aye?
Aye.
There's opposed.
So, the thing here is that allows people to continue to email up?
Sure.
You just pay that to the public.
And, and come talk to me, email the staff, um, talk to us, we'll be glad to walk you through any potential uses that you may be thinking of, or businesses that you already have, and how this ordinance or an ordinance like this might affect you. Staff is here to assist you with that interpretation.
And come to the meeting on June the 11th, and the public hearing will still be open, and you can stand at the podium and give your thoughts.
And in the meantime, please, we encourage each and every one of you all to please send us emails and indicate which, what's listed on here that you want removed, so that we can all review that. I, we strongly encourage you to please do that. We would certainly appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, next is going to be another text amendment, and that is going to be for crematoriums. This is zoning text amendment 2018-02. And this is to amend the zoning text permitted use table, to remove crematoriums from the, essentially the office and commercial zoning districts of OI and C-2, and to only have them permitted in the industrial districts of M1 and M2. Right now, the crematoriums are allowed, uh, state funeral homes and crematoriums, what we would be doing is to, again, only, only allow crematoriums by right in M1 and M2, and then funeral homes permitted by right in those commercial and office and, and, and in the industrial section as well. So, open that up for a public hearing.
All right. There are two people signed up to speak on this next public hearing regarding crematorium versus Sarah Carr. Sarah?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for taking your time. I'm here in support of the amendment to remove, to remove crematoriums from C2 and OI permitted use. These zones are often located next to residential zones in town, as well as school zones and public parks. Crematoriums, even with filters, release vaporized mercury from dental fillings, dioxins, and other toxins into the air. As we become more robotic with new joints and breast implants and other things in our bodies, they do get burned, and they release toxins into the environment. There have been several, many health studies actually done that show increases in stillbirths and brain health effects for pregnant women who live around crematoriums. In the EPA's 2000 inventory of dioxin emissions in the United States, they estimate that crematoriums emit enough dioxins per body that equate to the burning of 3,200 tires, or 320 pounds of trash from an incinerator. The sustained operation of a crematorium, perhaps for decades, would have long-lasting health effects to people who live around these areas. And my question is, do we want these in areas where people live, where people eat, where kids go to school, where people exercise? What parent is going to want their child out for decades to play outside and be breathing in these toxins? More cars will be brought as people, as bodies are cremated from all around the area. That increases traffic, which increases air pollution, which increases through traffic through residential neighborhoods, and also affects the ability of families to live and play. Lastly, I believe that if you do adopt this text amendment, it will help preserve residential property values. There's plenty of data out there that show people don't want to live near crematoriums, that residential property values fall if they're located near crematoriums. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
The next speaker is Houston Blair.
My name is Houston Blair, and I own 458 West Street, Bed and Breakfast there. We're right across the, the street from the proposed crematorium, and I wanted to speak out against that as well. It's quite interesting, Sarah. We have many of the same statistics written down, but I want to concur with what Sarah said, but in addition, there are a couple of other nuisance factors that would come with a crematorium, one of them being noise, and the other one odors, both which would be objectionable to the residential people around. And in my case, we have a bed and breakfast. We have people coming from all over the United States and from many foreign countries that could actually come into our town for various reasons. And I'm sure if they're coming and they're smelling objectionable odors, if they're aware that they would be breathing these toxins, that they're not going to want to come. And, you know, Sarah's correct, with, with our property values. So, I think that this is an important amendment, and I thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope that you would not allow that use. Thank you.
Thanks, Houston. The next public hearing requires swearing of witnesses at the special use permit for proposed daycare at 399 Old Graham Road. Do you have those people who wish to speak on this particular public hearing? There's no one signed up. There's no one signed up? Oh, yes, there is. Tell me your name.
This is the applicant. This is the applicant, in case, if you want me to go ahead and do my part first?
Yeah, let's make sure you do the, the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, this is special use permit 201A-02. The DRT Cabool is requesting a special use permit to operate the daycare at 399 Old Graham Road. The property is owned, R15 Low Det City Residential, and the proposed daycare will be using the existing structures and be able to accommodate a maximum of 10 children and two teachers. The zoning ordinance requires three parking spaces for daycare of this size. The zoning ordinance requires three parking spaces for daycare of this size. The existing fence is six feet in height, and the hours of operation will be between 10:30 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Recommendation is to hold the evidence during the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Cabool. Would you like to speak? There's no one else signed up to speak against your proposal. Would you like to speak for us?
Maybe just a little introduction. Hi, good evening. My name is Weedy Art Cabool, but everybody-
Would you repeat after me? Would you rather take an oath or affirmation?
Oh, in or?
I swear that the evidence I shall give-
I swear that the evidence that I shall give-
Shall be the truth?
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth?
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth?
And nothing but the truth. So how we done? So everybody call me Weedy. So when I moved here in Pittsburgh, which is, I only rent a two-bedroom house with a very nice backyard, but I only make it for my daughter, actually, for her to just doing her education for schooling purposes. So example, I just make one room as a reading room with all the manipulative equipment, and the other room is for art and craft, and she can invent anything, from cardboard to anything. And the backyard, we do all that gardening thing. And we want to invite more children to come to our places to learn something that they cannot get, I mean, like they don't have enough time at school, like making art, of course, crafting projects, stamp projects, gardening. Because that's funny, because we, our broccoli, strawberries, and potato, everything is just blooming like magic. Well, it's not magic, but it's just wonderful to see. So, and then all that bug there, how big the slug that can hide, or they can have a party there, sufficient for even a climbing dome. So it's just fun to have at maximum 10 children. I don't really hope that much. Just, you know, to enjoy it with us, even only like making a shaker or, you know. We gotta do something electronic to computer or programming, something like that, but it's not, you know, big, big thing, just for the kids to experience after school. So that's about it, I guess.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Is this your home? Is this your home?
Not the one that I live in, no.
Okay. And what was ours to be?
It's 10:30 to 6:00 p.m. In summary, it's not sunset yet, so it's good.
Well, I can make an observation. So this will be a business, and so it will have certain zoning requirements that we were talking about earlier. And I can tell you that you will be required to have handicap, eight handicap space. And it will have to be concrete or asphalt, it can't be gravel. And so this plan right now is not showing that type of facility. And on that, I would be unable to approve it.
What if I make a railing?
It will have to meet all handicap requirements.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a motion to go out of your public hearing? Move by Michael Fierke, second by Tim LaBolt. Those who favor the decision, keep pressing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Question, great, yes. The next matter on the agenda is citizens' matters. And Ryan has been a- a very patient man. Ryan, is it hard? Harper.
Ryan Harbor?
If Ryan wanted to speak on Potterstone?
Can I be the crowd?
He's coming. We're here.
All right. Ryan Harbor, welcome.
I'm here.
We were just admiring your patience and long-standing-
My body's been covered already, we're canvassing. Cock, cocks, cock.
We're glad to have you. Speakers for the public physical matters, technically are only three minutes in time, but we'll ease that up just a little bit if you'd like to begin.
Our group, we live in Potterstone Village. There are three parcels of-
Would you speak your name and address for the friend?
Oh, Brian Harbor, 306 May Farm Road, Pittsburgh. There are three parcels of land that surround our community, and they are zoned in to heavy industrials. And we recently found out that there was a second concrete plant being considered to come in on our side of the road. We already knew one was on the other side of the road. And we're in the process of trying to see if we can get that land rezoned, or some protections from our neighborhood. Because we are R10, and that is in to the heavy industrial. And we feel kind of lucky that we found out. And I brought a petition, a letter signed by 165 of our residents. I don't know if you saw that. And so we're trying to begin the process. And that's basically it. That's basically it. We're concerned that there'll be, I just concrete plants with other things put in right next to our residence that will be detrimental to our values or harm. That's just about it. And there's a- Raise your hand if you're from Potterstone, who came tonight. I wanted the board itself to take up this zoning matter as the board, and not as an individual applicant. Because our homeowner association is just, it's dragging its feet. We're sort of trying to straighten it out. I was told that that probably would not work, to have the board break this up. And that we would have to do it ourselves. We would have to fill out the application ourselves. Is that still my understanding? Can I, is that still, does anyone know?
Jeff Jones, could you speak to that?
So there's two ways to initiate a rezoning, if you're through.
And here you-
You want to stand here and say that?
Yeah.
So just for a point that you all know, knowing, I attended Potterstone's HOA meeting last Monday night. There was probably 100 or so folks there, and I explained what could happen. So that was explained to most people there. Rezonings can initiate either from an applicant. Usually that's from either a property owner or someone with an interest in the property, either through development or they're purchasing the property to develop. That's one way. That's three ways. That's one way. The town can initiate a rezoning and rezonate and go through that process. Or anybody really could ask for a rezoning of anyone's property. They could ask for the mayor's property to be rezoned if they want it. The process is that they would fill out the application just as normal, but they would have to certify that they've notified the actual property owner. And we have a form that they fill out. They send certified mail to the property owner, and they return that green card to us whenever they apply for the rezoning. And the same, the fees are the same. It's town-initiated zoning, there's no fees, because we just do the work. But the same, we would still have to notify the property owner and do the same legal requirements if anyone else was rezoning the property that they did not have interest in. That's generally the ways to make, to petition our rezoning.
Are there any questions about that? Thank you, Jeff.
Can I say a few more words?
Yes, sir.
I think that our homeowner association is just afraid we'll get sued. So they want to make sure that the rest of the residents know that. And I think that's part of their trepidation. And we're sort of, we know that if the concrete plant, the second one, Southeastern, has not made any applications yet. And they're actually seeking an easement from water and sewer through our property, through Potterstone. And that was what alerted us to what was going on. And so if they do make the application, then under the permit choice, they'll continue to get, to be able to have their plans submitted. But there's still a great little property that surrounds Potterstone. But I think it's sort of, it may be a, it seems kind of crazy to me that you have your residential and then you have heavy industrial right beside each other. That's sort of the issue. Do they uplet one another? I don't know how that happened. We weren't aware of it. But that's what we stand on. And anything that you can do, anything that you can help us with, we're going to try on our end to get an application. But if you could begin the process, as he said in the second place, we would greatly appreciate that.
Did any of you all move in while the chicken plant was still operating?
Me.
And-
We couldn't hear that question.
We couldn't hear the question.
The question was whether any of you had moved in during the time period when the chicken plant was operating. And I was assuming that part of the industrial zoning was the result of that, of that chicken plant.
Yes. And we're aware of the concrete plant across the street.
Yeah.
Right. And, you know, we're aware of the chicken plant there, right? But this is the one on this side of budding our-
Right. Well, there was a portion of the chicken plant that was on the-
Right.
That would be the north side of this, along your road.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, we're aware of that.
And it was probably one of the most offensive sections, in so much as it held trucks.
And that's what I told people. I said, well, at least that, a concrete plant, not a chicken plant.
Very clear. Yes, ma'am.
I was, I'm one of your homeowners who was there when the chicken plant was built. And we were told that the side that was on the opposite side, that construction would be on the opposite side of the road. And when I was told, and when we were told and sold our properties, is that the side with all the land was going to be, because it's part of the drainage, that Nigel Creek, there was going to be a little pathway, a park that the city was going to make as a walkway through that drainage area that had to remain. So I know people who bought their houses based on the idea that that area was going to be made a wooded area on the north side of that road instead of the chicken plant. Yes, we knew that the chicken plant was there, but we were told, again, we never expected heavy industry to be right across the creek now, which is where that second concrete plant is being rezoned, being asked to go.
And let me take your name for the record.
My name is Lorraine Kramer. My name is Lorraine Kramer. I'm 18th Armingley Lane in Potterstone. And I'd be more than willing to talk with you. Again, I was there when George owned it, and he was the one who was starting to organize it as a new community. And we were told all sorts of things, that that was not going to be developed ever. So we were told things, yes, I understand. But if, but we would take, you know, again, we just didn't realize it was going to be, we didn't realize until the second concrete plant came to us to get zoning. And I was the head of the HOA board until January of this year. So we were only told December 27th of last year that they had applied for, they had already told us that they applied for the permit, that they already bought the land, that everything was a done deal, and the only thing they needed was right-of-way through our sewer. And so they were asking to get right-of-way through our sewer. And I'm no longer the HOA board. I don't have anything to say about this. But we chose to deal with this as soon as we found out that it was zoned for heavy industry. Again, I was on the 6th year of the zone for heavy industry on this side of the road.
Yeah. Well, I greatly appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
I just want to say one last thing. And in my, the letter I wrote, that's my, we wanted appropriate, whatever that means, appropriate zoning, whatever you decide.
So you're not necessarily advocating for a particular thing. You just don't want it to be M2, is that right?
Right. We were just, you know, and this was the dilemma I had with Jeff. Was I said, well, what should we, what should we put it as? Because I don't know, you know, I'm no expert in zoning. I don't know. I don't know. What are other people, what are other communities that have had this similar problem? What did they, what did they do? What, what sort of measures did they take? So he was saying RA, and I was like, well, I don't even really know what that is. And how are the, you have to think about the rights of the owners of the property, right? Not just our rights, but the rights of the owners of property. What, how will they react? What's appropriate for them?
I'd like to say the ideal classification would be mixed. But you don't have a mixed classification in Pittsburgh.
And your name, sir?
My name's Alan Dirk. I was going to- I live in 103 Rattle Path in Potterstone. I was going to sign up to speak, but when I came in, you had all of Chatham Park in here, so I didn't get a chance to sign up. But-
No, Chatham Park's still here.
But they were presenting, so I was unable to sign up.
Alan, your last name is?
Dirk, D-I-R-K, just like the Scottish dagger. Mixed zoning, the mixed capability of zoning would be a benefit, I think both to the landowner as well as Potterstone, as well as to the township of Pittsburgh. To have, when the original board had passed and approved the appropriation for one of the largest residential complexes in Pittsburgh, they had an obligation and a responsibility to protect that investment. They did not. Therefore, it falls on the shoulders of this board. That can has been kicked down the road for many, many years. That can has so many dents, it's about time to pick it up and put it aside. There is no way, both from an ethical standpoint, and it is very improper to have heavy industrial next to almost 200 rip tops. You wouldn't find that pretty much anywhere because of ecological and environmental problems. Heavy industry brings a complete set of different problems that you have not experienced. I have. And if you, if you, heavy industrial is the worst possible zoning that you could ever have. If you want something dirty, that's where you put it. If you want something that- If you want something that has the possibility of causing illness, until people, that's where you put it. So to put that and allow that to be there for that many years is a travesty. It should have been looked at. It should have been handled when you allowed such a large residential complex to be put in there. I don't think that we're asking for a complete overhaul of your zoning system. All we're looking for is the appropriate zoning to protect value, which the board is supposed to be looking at, is protecting their residents from both ecological and environmental problems and compromise, as well as growth patterns and specific activities for growth that would allow it. And I've also heard that because your infrastructure is not appropriate, i.e. parking, water, sewer, to have residential out there with major residential buildup, your sewer and larcens could not take it. That's a problem the previous boards were missing doing. They should have looked and planned for the future. They did not. Now we are stuck with that can and an empty classification.
I would hope, this is going to be my hope that you would make a motion to begin rezoning, but I don't know. That would just be my hope.
If you want my presentation, I can read it.
Okay, why don't you leave it for the record? That would be excellent. Thank you. Well, I will note that, I recall that when Potterstone first came in, of course, it was Mayfair Farm, that there was a disclaimer or a notice in each of the real estate contracts which basically said that you all by buying there were coming to an industrial area because the turkey, the plant was there, it's turkey creek, not, the chicken plant was there.
Right.
There was also a store with gas pumps on the corner, which is currently owned by someone who does big gas station developments. And, and so anybody who bought early on in Potterstone had to sign of acknowledgement that they were, they were coming essentially to an area which had not only the chicken plant, but also was within the 10-mile radius of the nuclear plant. And, and so to a certain, I don't know how many buyers down the line it went, but certainly the people who initially bought in were aware of those kinds of industrial uses that were adjacent to the property.
We just moved in last September and we had no idea.
Thank you.
I have one question, Brad. Have you contacted the landowner?
No, we, we just had a meeting Monday with the, with our homeowners association. So we haven't. And I don't know, I don't know really what we would say. I mean, I don't really understand what you, what would I, what would we hope to gain?
Well, I mean, Jeff gave you the opportunity, the landowner could change the rezoning.
The landlord would lose his business if he changes the rezoning, so why would we want to give him that bill?
I'll just ask, did you contact the landowner?
Right. We have, we have, and we have not, but we could. And if we, and if we begin the process, was there actually three landowners around us? Three parcels of 100 acres each on the east, southeast, and south of us. But like I said, sir, we would also, we would ask you to do something appropriate, right? And, and the input of that, of the landowner, I would think that would be important. And if it's going to be rezoned, it'd be a public year. And...
It's going to be done overnight.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that, but...
I mean, I agree with you guys. I have family that lives in Potterstone, so, you know, I'm right behind you.
But, I mean, do you think there's a chance if you asked the, the landowner, "Would you like to change it to something more restricted?", do you think they would say yes? I think they would probably say no.
I don't know. It's an option you got.
It is, it is an option, because I personally don't think they would like it.
Well, I'm not convinced it would be something more restrictive. In fact, it might be something with far greater uses available to them, just not of an industrial sort.
Okay.
Which is why I said mixed. Mixed opens up a huge capability.
So I wonder if there's a way to consult with the owners and maybe partner with the owners. They will be better, I do think.
We don't have a problem with that. We worry about any kind of action back towards us if we start that process and we don't come to an agreement. It coming back on us in some kind of negative way.
I would not, never practice law, but I think being neighborly and asking to cooperate with neighbors could probably not, I think, suggest you should have laws.
Right. These are, before I can tell absentee owners, I think they're not from around, they're not from around here, right? One of them is from Southern Florida, so, you know, I don't, don't know. But be open to, if you came up with an idea of some sort of zoning that was...
Isn't it that you sell, sell like a buffer to HOA or something, that would be another...
They had offered, the concrete plant offered to different things. We gave them an easement, a water easement, they had offered, but we were going to have to negotiate that.
That might be something you can negotiate, if you want a certain risk buffer between two plans and your property line. I mean, that might be something to think about.
True. This is true.
Is there any reflectance, and we have residential, we have industrial, like, I think there is?
On Chatham Street there's a community right next to the concrete plant.
Sure is.
Which is a travesty.
There you go. Yes. We don't want to travesty.
Out of the words of the mayor, we don't want to travesty. I agree with you with the buffer. If, if way back when they had looked at that and the board had said, "By authorizing such a large residential community to be built there, create a buffer around it." That would have, yeah, that would have been the easiest and most efficient way of handling it, because then you'd have a tree buffer separating. But since that hasn't been done, I mean, if that's on the table, that's fine. And as I said, the other way to offer to a landowner is the ability to create more abilities to sell, sell the land. And a mixed zoning area opens that up, because it's not as restrictive as heavy industry. Heavy industry is very restrictive, which is one of the problems, because you have to be, you have to be a fairly bad industry to constitute heavy.
Mr. Dirk, I think the issue is we don't, we don't have that designation separate, Jeff. We don't have a mixed designation.
Right.
So we've got to think about the designations that we do have on the books.
And that's why I stated that you don't have the next one.
And we do have a mixed-use plan development. We've got a mixed-use plan development. A plan development? Yes. Which it takes a lot of planning. And that's a much bigger ask than rezoning, for them to create a PUD. Well, it is a rezoning.
Well, a lot of, a lot of places have a zone, which is called mixed, which is commercial and residential.
We need, we need to move forward here. The public expression period has the last.
Thank you.
So what do we do?
The next item on the agenda is commissioner update. I have, I've only done a couple of things this past period since the last meeting after the end of the UDO public information session, which several of us did. Kind of ribbon at the, at the new Y location. I have continued work on floor quality issues. And does anyone else have any updates on the UDO or Triangle J Council of Government or Main Street?
Well, I can talk about Main Street. I know we'll, I think getting on the budget documents this evening. And within that document is Main Street's request, but I think we have since updated that request and have a slight increase in our request. And so when we have those documents, I'll explain that to you. So that'll be coming. And I would have to say that downtown Millbrook Street, you could see three refuse and recycling containers in the same style as our current benches and bathrooms. So I love the folks that give me, asking for recyclables to tax. Taking the money that we have been allocated through last year's budget, taking it up with all of those, so they'll be, it's about eight to 10 week manufacturing process, so they won't be on the ground any, any of the next couple of months, but they're on their way.
Anything else?
I attended the Triangle J Council of Government meeting, and the town of Pittsburgh needs to approve the updated charter and send it back to Triangle J. And also, I need, I'm going to provide you all with information concerning the census that's coming up, and I will give that to you next meeting. There's a lot of information regarding that. Yes.
I attended the Chatham Unions Committee meeting, and a great group of people, and initially were working on creating the definition of what we're going to actually do. You have to do that before you can actually define, so we're going to be a committee that actually just lays the groundwork for a longer term, depending on the market. A very influential group.
There is new, new business scheduled for this evening. Under all the business, we have early discussion with Jeff Jones on the Chatham Park additional element of public facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board. So this is a continuation of the public facilities element discussion. You all have discussed over the last couple of meetings, the school portion of the public facilities, and I do believe there's been some direction given to Chatham Park and schools to, to come back with some, some different language that they've proposed to you all. At the first meeting back in April, I included a memo from our parks planner, Paul, to kind of have you all think about parks in general from a developer's side, and how parks would be built and provided for in Chatham Park specifically, because this is their element, but really moving forward with any development. The biggest provision that I think discussion needs to happen is the use of fee and loo and how that might impact the total acreage of parkland that will be provided for as per the master plan. So the master plan states that you, that Chatham Park will dedicate or have 667 acres of parkland, whether that be public or private, that's parkland. And there is a provision in the master plan for fee and loo, and how fee and loo works is that, how Chatham Park contemplates it working, is that they would provide for the facility, either in a greenway or a park. And that cost of developing that park would come off the total of the acreage set aside in the master plan of 667 acres. So what the town would actually get in, in parkland would be less than the 667 acres. We would get a built facility most likely quicker, but we would get less parkland provided to the town. That's a concern for staff, because we feel like the level of service is going to be even stretched then at 667 acres. That's, there should, that are going to need more. And there may be opportunities for staff to discuss that in the future, where we're either trying to purchase property or gain property in another way outside of the 667 acres. So I think it's important for you all to hear from Chatham Park on how they envision parks and fee and loo working. And then you all discuss that with Chatham Park and go from there. And I think Paul's here, if you have any questions on parks, and he'd be a good resource at that. Follow us, come here if you can answer any questions.
Who's going to speak on behalf of Chatham Park?
Ma'am, what'd you say? I'm sorry.
What's my name? Who's going to speak on behalf?
Well, by default, I am Ken Eagle, 2235 Gateway Access Point, Raleigh. Chuck disguised it very well, but he was in a fair amount of pain this evening, some foot problems, and so he's, he has left us. And that kind of leaves it to me by default, I guess, to try to have this discussion with you on public facilities. So I think we have, as far as what Jeff was saying, I'd like to say a couple of things about that. The master plan, based on the existing town standards of parkland dedication, that's what we provided for in there. I believe it's 1/33 of an acre per residential unit, if I'm correctly, please, if I'm wrong.
For dwelling unit.
For dwelling unit. I believe it is per unit. And what I wanted to add to that is the 667 would be based on the maximum buildout of 22,000 residential units. I think you will see, certainly when we get to the North Village Small Area Plan that we have, we are, we are showing in that small area plan, less residential units than the maximum, maximum that would be allowed in that area. And in this, I would think probably likely to continue. Now, that's not to say that years from now, when maybe none of us are here, that with redevelopment and things like that, that could be more used in the future. But as far as the master plan is concerned and the maximum number of units that's allowed, that's what the 667 acres is. And we also committed in the master plan to accelerate that by actually dedicating at the rate of 1/25th acre per residential unit until the 667 is reached, would be 16,667 residential units instead of 22,000, would be the point at which that would be reached. And we have set out in the master plan, what, I mean, excuse me, in the public facilities element, what we do propose with respect to park plans and payments and so forth. And if you have questions about that, we'd be glad to try to answer them and also address other aspects of the public facilities element. If you recall, last time we discussed this, Commissioner Filco had some concerns with respect to the schools portion of the element, and the school board indicated to you that it was satisfied with, with that portion of the element. We continued those discussions, however, to try to address Commissioner Filco's main concern, or one of his main concerns at least, with respect to how sites might be shifted or released from a reservation. And the, the school board came up with a suggestion as to how to deal with that. You may recall that part of the school language said that a site would be reserved, and that if the, if the school board indicated that they were interested in that site, then there was a period of time that to confirm that, school... period of time that to confirm that, the school board would have to come forward with a development plan. And I think Commissioner Fiocco and probably the rest of the board was concerned that that might be something that would require a great deal of expense on behalf of the school board and that, you know, it wouldn't be a good thing to have the school board spend that money and then perhaps not get that site for some reason. Well, what the school board suggested and what we are in agreement with is a sentence to be added that says that the development plan shall consist of a site sketch showing the proposed location of a school parking and recreation fields on the applicable school site. A much less intense and involved development plan, if you will. Just something that the school would show that it has put some, the school board shows put some thought into it and has some idea of what it's willing to or wanting to put on that site. And I don't think this would require a whole lot of expense or time for the school board to come up with this type of sketch plan for what they were trying to do. So we, they proposed that and we're fine with that, just, you know, trying to be as flexible as possible. We had also proposed again to address a concern about the school sites and sewer. We had proposed a way to deal with that with a, based on, there's formulas that the school board has to determine the number of students based on the number of residential dwelling units. And we had proposed a method of reserving sewer capacity based on the number of residential units that were approved for development and based on the formulas that come from the school board and also from the state of North Carolina with respect to amount of sewer needed per student, per school type and that sort of thing. And so we had put that to you also last time. I have, in looking back at that, it occurred to me that there were some typos and I made some, a few revisions to that just to correct that and put some capital letters where it should be. But essentially, what we gave you is what we think is appropriate for that. One thing that I would like to change on that, that I think is better from the school perspective is the language we proposed last time at the end of that document said that the sewer capacity reserved by CPI, Chatham Park Investments for Schools, shall be released for other use at such time as, one, a school site reservation terminates, or two, actual sewer capacity is acquired by the Board of Education from the town or another provider. I'd like to propose the revision to, so, one of that to say, at such time as, one, a school site reservation terminates, at which time the sewer capacity reserved for the type of school contemplated for that site shall be released. Because that would make it specific to the type of school and the amount of sewer that was reserved for that site, which I think would be a fairer way to deal with that if the reservation terminated either because of the time had run out or the school board might decide that they would be better served to have their school be in a different location, which might not even be inside of the Chatham Park boundary. So that's something that we proposed to kind of tweak that a little bit to deal with that. So that's where we are on the schools, I think, with respect to the language to deal with the actual site reservation issue and with the sewer issue. There were also some questions about impervious surface allocations and how to deal with stormwater. And what we would like to propose on that for your consideration is that we deal with the impervious surface allocations in the applicable small area plans when we've got a little more idea and we hone down on more of what the residential is going to be, we've got a better idea how many students are likely to be generated, and we can look at the school situation based on the information they've given us and on all the meetings and continuing discussions that we have with the school board and understand better what type of school might need to be there, what size a school might be, you know, the type of, how much impervious surface a school might need so that we don't exceed, you know, the limits on impervious surface that we're allowing under the approved master plan. And also, there was the issue of stormwater and dealing with that. And we could deal with that in one of two ways. I would say either we can try to deal with that in the stormwater element and add some provisions to that, or also deal with a allocation or a way to deal with the school's stormwater in the applicable small area plan, just like we would try to deal with impervious surface. Because we really need to have a little better idea, you know, what we're looking at than, I think, than to try to deal with it in the element at this level when we don't really have, you know, the small area plan approved and we're a little further down the road to deal with those issues. So, and that would be the same, we would like to propose the same type of thing to deal with other public facilities that might be within a small area, for example, when we have a better idea of what parks might be there and what type of facilities might be there and what the sewer needs might be and what the impervious surface needs might be. So we would ask you to consider allowing us to address those things in the, really in the small area plans would be, I think, our preference to do it, but we could address some of the stormwater in the stormwater element effectually. So that's kind of getting into those things that we talked about last time. But if you have thoughts about that or questions about that, any discussion on that that we can have with you.
I hate to characterize it this way, but it strikes me that we're kicking the can down the road.
I think that that's a fair statement in a sense. Because at this point, it's, and the reason, I think, is a legitimate reason, that we will have a better idea as we look at small area plans to hone down on what's needed to serve the residential that's going to be in the small area that we're looking at. And that we can have further discussions with the schools based on the small area plan. We can have further discussion with the planning department and with the parks department as to what public facilities, you know, might be going into those small areas and then we can focus on that and be better able to come up with closer numbers, if you will, to what we really expect to be there. You know, at this point, we're looking at on a global basis for the entire Chatham Park and without really getting down to another level, certainly in the area south of 64 Business, it would, you know, be difficult to project some of those things with respect to that at this point. But once we're at the small area plan level, I think that would be an appropriate place. And of course, you know, you would, as the board would have to approve the small area plan as well. So, I mean, we can make some guesses and try to deal with it at this point, but I would propose that it would be better dealt with down the road in terms of having more information and a better idea of what we're talking about with respect to number of residential units.
Yeah, I think, you know, small area plan is a great place to better understand what's going on. In absence of having that, having to have the element approved prior to that, I can see us projecting or thinking of us down the road in such a way, though, that guarantees that there will be adequate capacity for development of the parks, the schools, police, fire. That includes sewer adequacy, impervious surface, stormwater management. Go back to a discussion like that had many times ago that said, yeah, but what if there's none left? Right? And so if we can have language that says we won't get to a point where there's not enough left to develop the critical public facilities, then I think the small area plan is a great place to result in.
We're certainly willing to do that. I mean, that's reasonable, certainly from our perspective, and we're willing to do that. Because of the restrictions on development that we have until a small area plan would be approved, it's unlikely we could get that far anyway. But certainly, I'd be glad to put some language in there that does exactly what you're saying.
And I think that would make it more comfortable without having to decide what the numbers are today, guessing and missing and having a lot of concentration. Because, I mean, the size of the property that's going to be dedicated for a school site will be relative to the school itself, will be relative to impervious surface, stormwater impacts, the amount of sewer it needs, you know, future growth of that facility needs to be considered. And, you know, honestly, I thought, oh, well, let's make it simple. We'll say it has to be at least 70% impervious. Well, it might be in a highly urbanized area and it wants to be far more than 70% impervious, which we can do.
As long as you're overall.
Exactly. So, you know, I think if we're a standalone project, yes, then the 70% would be a critical number because that's the most anyone can have on this property. But if we can come up with language that says, bases the capacity on adequacy to be determined in the future, then I think we could get there.
That's something we're willing to do, Mr. Messick, on that, to try to come up with something that addresses that and gives us a better opportunity once we get to that planning level to be a little more realistic about what we're talking about in terms of the numbers.
I think the stormwater one's the hardest one because
Could be.
Such a sophisticated program that you come up with. Okay, this park's a bit 70%, that park's a bit 70%, you know? And the idea behind this master plan is to be something completely different. And so there, that's where I don't know how you put numbers on it other than say it has to be adequate.
Yeah. Well, and we've got a pretty, you know, we've got a pretty good idea, I think, and I think a pretty good way to, at least for schools and the sewer, a pretty good way to figure that out, you know, based on this formula that we've proposed to you, once we get a better idea of what kind of school we're talking about. And then, you know, we've got, we've got, but there are statistics that show what's a typical amount of sewer you might need for a fire station and so much for parks and things like that, that we can put that together when we have a better idea at the small area plan level. So, yeah, I think, I think we've come up with some language that addresses adequacy and requires us to do that at the small area plan level. Speaking of stormwater, have you heard anything from our structures yet?
We haven't received their comments. Chatham Park hasn't received them as well. And I think there's a lot of room to figure out how they can address it.
That's correct. We are. We're reviewing them and hope to have some
Hunter with that, I guess?
Hunter, yes, he's absolutely. We're in the process of reviewing that and hope to have some discussions with staff and then come back to the board after we've done that. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You'll feel good. There won't be any holding back in that. It's just, they need to be able to be, you need to see the responses to the comments. But you'll get the original comments.
So I think I'm following the conversation. It feels later than it is after an intense first part of the meeting, but Commissioner Fiocco, your expression of willingness to entertain this crafted, language has to be crafted, is intriguing to me. But I also always want to think about a scenario which, to be kind, let's say we have a case of alien abduction for the principles of Chatham Park. You know, times will change, it'll be a different set of players here in the future. And what will give us confidence, maybe I'm just needing to make and see that language, what will give us confidence that it will be adequate at any point? How do we force that?
And I think that's what, you're right, the language has to be very carefully crafted. But I think, I think it can be done and I, Paul might decide that it can't be done and we have to actually have fixed hard numbers that state what the adequacy is now. But I think it's going to be very hard to do. And if we can construct the
Anyhow, it should be effective.
And if we can just not worry about all the changes that are going to occur after the alien abduction, that we can still consider that being adequate, you know? I mean, part of, I think our sewer contractor talking about going to DEQ and asking for a reduction from the two T rules of how much a flush is. And so it might not be 120 gallons for a flush. It might, well, for better, if, you know, a student, it might be half of that, which then redefines adequacy. So I think we can get there and apply the best way to do it. Because at the end of the day, what we don't want to have happen is Chatham Park said, here's the school site, they developed everything around it, now there's no more impervious surface, no more stormwater treatment capacity, and we're going to say, that's not adequate.
Well, that doesn't do us any good to have that happen either. So we're not interested in that.
So I like that for the, I guess it's the impervious surface and stormwater. And so, which kind of charted out how each student brings along sewer capacity.
Yes, and there are guidelines, I think, for other public facilities, but those can change as well, just like the ones for residential uses can change.
Well, how would we address the concern that Jeff Jones brought to us tonight about Chatham Park supplying the land and the cost of developing the park? We've come off the value of the total acreage. How do we, how do we address that? What did the master plan say with respect to, was it just a flat?
The master plan allowed, the master plan called for following what the town's rules are, in a short way, but again, land dedication or payment and lieu. It's, you contemplate that both of those are possibilities to do. And again, we propose to follow the town's rules, except for the fact that we also proposed to accelerate the pace.
I think our subdivision ordinance speaks to the amount of land in that ratio, but it speaks of facilities, which is clearly something more than land. it speaks of facilities, which is clearly something more than land.
But it would not be a multi-million dollar water park. I'm, you know, I'm thinking that some parks are quite modest in their, in their facilities. You know, just some quiet bamboo and a bench there on Rectory Street, Paul, seems like just such a lovely idea. But I've never been a big fan of payment in lieu. And I guess I, there have been instances in which payment in lieu, I suppose, has been a good thing for the county, for example, developing affordable housing out at Briar Creek, Chatham. And the influx of money that came to Chatham as a result of that payment in lieu. But generally, it's not just a huge fin of in lieu.
I feel like you kind of pin them with that place that they're of purpose, sort of, and when that is bought out, then it's not used for the purpose.
The arrangement with Briar Chapel is different. It started out as a combination of payments in lieu of and also housing in place. They found out that housing in place was not working, there was not any way to make that happen. And so Briar Chapel proposed a discount, the payment in lieu of, and the county took it. So it was a way to cash out the affordable housing obligation that Briar Chapel had. So, payment in lieu here is an easier way to deal with the problem.
Easier for the.
Town. You get to build a bigger park where you want to have it, not a little pocket park, not a neighborhood park, not a community park for a development of a particular area. You get to put it somewhere else that can serve more people, more area.
All those elements speaks to payment in lieu being used in Chatham Park. So if you want to clarify that.
Well, that's what the work that says anyway.
The reduction of acreage is from, if they were to build the facility, if they were just to provide payment, then we would be building Greenways and Park.
So, I'm quite following the contemplation of the conflation of parks, land for parks with land for greenways. And not understanding why that doesn't end up being a more highlighted issue. Can I have a better understanding of that, either from Mr. Jones or Mr. Horn?
Paul could probably have stepped in and make a better job than I can, but I think with all of this, with that, Greenways could have, and should have been looked at as a transportation element and not a parks element. But as it is, it's a park element, and it's going to be considered in the park acreage. But, yeah, Paul would probably be able to expand on all his thoughts on that.
Paul? Please, Paul, do you have a.
Sure.
Would you use the.
Happy for the aliens to come now, really.
Well, it's better than hearing you do Richie Valens and, you know, what was the other caller? Plane driving out.
Big Bob.
Big Bob.
Big Bob? Try to be kind.
Well, so the conflation of Greenways and parkland isn't inherently good or bad. I think, I think even the question of fee in lieu isn't inherently good or bad. But I would tend to agree with the mayor that you want to avoid it unless it's a last resort. Where we're, where we're really at now is, do we have enough, will we have enough land? Who's going to pay for the development of these facilities? We're in the middle of Park's Recreation System Master Plan, which is starting to inform this conversation with what our levels, expected, expected levels of service are, what they are now, and we have an expectation that that same quality level of service will be maintained or increased, and certainly not decreased. So, right now, we don't really have enough detail in the additional element sense to not just the amount of acreage, but what, not all parks are the same. So, we know that there'll be seven, ten acre local neighborhood parks. You know, you're going to have cost estimates. Typically, that's about a two million dollar expenditure to devote down, not including the land. So, we want to make sure that as these new people move in, that we have adequate provision, the way to pay for it, adequate land, and those are really the two big issues. And I'm going to say a taboo word, impact fees. But an impact fee study would work out the legal rationale that's fair to the town as well as fair to developers, based on established legal principles. And saying, okay, this is what we're spending now for parks, for capital, you know, we want to at least have new development, have that same level of service, and we want to ensure that the development pays for that, so that we have a fiscal and sustainable system fully. Those are really the big issues here, and the decisions now, I don't know if you have enough information to really even consider these things yet. I think an impact fee analysis, a fiscal impact analysis for parks would be useful. Continuing this Park's master plan, which is shooting for adoption in August, that will come back to you, we're continuing to work on it, working on cost estimates and implementation of plan right now, still tweaking the issue a bit. That's in progress. That'll inform this entire discussion. I trust you'll want to hear from your Parks Recreation Advisory Board on these issues. So that's a bit of a long-winded and roundabout answer, or perhaps non-answer to your question, Mr. Horn.
No, Mr. Horn, I appreciate it. I think what I'm hearing you say is that you don't have enough detail in the current language of the addition element to answer the question on payment in lieu or means of provision for land for parks or payment for development. And you recommend that we could get more data, data we would need through a fiscal impact analysis for parks.
Right.
And that that would, I heard you say that it could be worked out based on the current legal rationale and established legal principles and a fair apportioning of payments from all parties.
Right. You can't just say you have to provide this, this, this. There has to be some legal rational nexus for that to ask.
And that's the payment in lieu consideration, rational nexus. And I'm thinking about the subdivision, and I'm, it's not as fresh and reminding us as it was. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's, one of the reasons that I was personally gumbo about having this master plan happen was that part of the ordinance says the facilities to be provided are in accordance with the town needs, and we were unable to say what the town needs. But with the master plan in place, we should have the ability to make some statement to all developers, if that remains in our code.
Yes. You'll still probably need to, that there's levels of service to a further degree that this plan will provide, but it'll give you the tools and framework to start really drilling into that.
Well, I think the developer's still longing wants to do eighty unit subdivision. We can decide whether Park pension or bamboo land is adequate for those residents, or whether they should make a contribution of payment in lieu so you can get a really big bench and a really larger standard.
And it may be a payment in lieu, it may be an impact fee, wanting to consider bonds or, you know, is the tax money from the residents going to cover the capital cost of development of not just local parks, regional parks, soccer fields, all of those types of things that when I interviewed all of you, said, yeah, we want a complete, full system parks plan with program, maybe Greenways and all of these nice things that people might want to consider.
Well, definitely this year I had this on page two, where there's, there's talk about, we talked about, the definition of parkland, they clear that parkland doesn't need to be public or private, and I would just send along the payment. There's a land that is designated, an allotment of land, we've got, we'd be open to public, not, not private park. What do you think, I have a big impression?
You know, and there's actually language in the master plan that, I think we need more detail on all of that, but there is actually language in the master plan that clarifies, Mr. Regal, and Gregor, and Molly, that private refers to private ownership, or private ownership or maintenance, but that all of your private parks would be accessible to the public. That's my reading of the master plan.
That's mostly, I'd say that's mostly correct, but I would say that to qualify as a parkland is required under the master plan, if it could be privately owned but open to the public. It could, however, also be other, other park, other private park type things in Chatham Park that would, in fact, be private, that wouldn't qualify as your, as the parkland requirement of the master plan, but could still be private.
Would be in addition.
Correct.
That's not part of the town.
That's not part of the six hundred.
That would not be part of what's required.
The percentage, the percentage of each dwelling of the dangerous parks, that would not be used for private parks.
Unless the private park was open to the public.
Exactly, but that's not, when I say accessible to the public, I mean, that's.
Okay. But the way the master plan reads is it could be privately owned but open, but open to the public. Privately owned and not open to the public would not qualify to meet the master plan requirement.
Unless it's a private park, which you could do.
Well, sure. I mean, somebody, some, some house builder could come in and do a subdivision and want something that's completely private of the persons that live in that subdivision.
That they can, they can pay use for.
Correct.
Honestly, I think it's most likely, well, it's likely to happen in more than family projects where the development.
Well, you have an apartment project that might have a swimming pool and would be open to everybody in the town. Pittsburgh.
As long as the town, you know, that the one thirty-third acre per dwelling is not being used for parks that aren't, that's not.
Well, I think the master plan already is addressed, though.
That's all, I just wanted to clarify that.
You have any questions, Paul? So it looks like we're developing some clarifications, some amendments to the existing terminology for, the attorney's getting together to craft some language about looking at the small area plans and open some ideas about the numbers gained, particularly regarding stormwater and impervious surface, until we see what, what that particular area.
Subletting.
Needs are. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, with the addition of Mr. Joko stated on the adequacy, can we vote on this element tonight? I mean, there's no other questions that we have been presented.
I don't.
No, no, but here's, here's another question. So the special assessment district is to be used for infrastructure for your development, correct?
Well, we don't have one right now, so that's hard to say. The county's not in favor of it right now, so it's hard to say.
That's the intent. Okay. I believe that police and fire are infrastructure for development. We've heard from this board a desire for a conversation about that. I would like that conversation to continue, and I think that, in fact, I've read that fire stations and land for fire departments are allowed under the specialties, excuse me, the special assessment district law. I believe so. So.
I'll check that, but I thought that was one thing, it wasn't, but I'll confirm that.
Well, I appreciate that.
Sure.
It also occurs to me that the kinds of folks that will be attracted to the residential properties that I've seen characterized and described in gestural terms in the small area plan are probably going to want a fairly high level of service on things like vacuuming of leaves and removal of ice from their thoroughfares. And so I think it would be wise of us to also anticipate the need for a public works facility in North Village, and probably one long deadline in the rest of the acreage. So I would ask that you contemplate how the special assessment district tool can be utilized to provide land for fire department, for police department, for public works.
If there is a special assessment district, we would be glad to consider it. Right now, it doesn't exist. If the town would like to undertake the special assessment district and do it, then we could cut a deal. Right now, the county is not being very corporate.
Well, I understand that they have contemplated the realities of forty to sixty year burden of service in collecting those fees, and they're taking it very seriously. That's our understanding of it. So, I wish y'all luck in continuing the conversations.
There is no conversation right at this point.
What I've heard is that's your choice, your choice. That's what I've heard.
Not at all, no. You've been misinformed. If the town would like to undertake the special assessment district, we'd be glad to talk to you about it.
We don't. I don't believe we have capabilities to do that.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. Any municipality.
But we have the legal authority.
We have the legal authority, the staff capabilities and so on and so forth.
Well. Well, I'm surprised to hear that sentiment about the county's position. Nor have I, but honestly, I've always felt the special assessment district was something that the town would promote and request the county, and that the county would not do it without our enforcement. So honestly, I think it is, this board's, I still think it's our purview. Whether it is county managed or town managed, I believe, in fact, the county collects our taxes today, they would be doing the same thing, it would be just another fee in that tax bill. So I don't know that town staff would be burdened. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the county is thinking as far as a burden in collecting taxes, and I keep track of it, perhaps it would be a problem. But, you know, I've, I've been thinking.
But, you know, I've, I've been thinking a lot about the special assessment district and one of the things that I like about it is the fact that it can address issues such as affordable housing. And so I see it as a, as a tool perhaps to be used in that regard, if maybe the town should be the administrator of like the special assessment district. If one is created. But I mean, it's, it's got many things to do with it. Is it a, I mean, at the end of the day, it's tax dollars, providing the infrastructure that a community needs, and we're all, I think, believing that affordable housing is a critical piece of this job for a community, for help. So I've started to think about it in that, in those corners, and I hear what you're saying about.
I, I made inquiries about the same, Michael, on this.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate your, your, I like your vision. That doesn't help us out of the current situation. And that's, that's a lot to think about.
Well, it is a plan for.
A lot to scrutinize. And it doesn't help us get a managerial element passed. So.
Would you like to help in a, in a portable housing issue?
It might, it might indeed, yeah. If we, if we look to that mechanism, to that tool, well, then that would be two policies, as I'm suggesting here, that public facilities look to that mechanism for provision of land for town. Police, fire, public works, same with the schools.
In the additional element, when you were talking about the fire stations and police stations, I know it indicates that you would identify locations when we have small area plans.
Yes, ma'am.
So are you staying in there, then you would expect for us to purchase those properties that lands from you?
Yes, ma'am.
That's very interesting. Because we have to provide, we, it would be necessary for there to be fire and police stations. And I just don't think it would be fair to say that you want us to purchase that land to provide those, because we're gonna have, someone will have to build the facility as well. And that, and I know you all aren't planning to build a facility.
Yes, ma'am. And we just want to be treated as if we were citizens of other parts of the town. You don't specifically make anybody else pay for a fire station, utility yards, police stations, it all comes out of abhorrent taxes. Chuck showed you tonight that in six years, you'll have five more million dollars of abhorrent taxes. The county will have twenty million more of abhorrent taxes. That's what, that's what abhorrent taxes is used for, to pay, and that's spread over the whole population, not just one specific subdivision. So we just want to be treated fairly.
I understand that, I do understand that, but I just don't think it would be fair either to say you want the town to, because this would be a large development.
Correct.
And to say, okay, town, we want you to buy the land from us to build the fire, the fire station that we would need for Chatham Park. And just don't think that.
Because if you're building another facility.
Right.
Here again, we just want to be treated like every other person in Pittsburgh and not be singled out to have to pay for this, pay for schools, pay for fire, pay for utility yards, pay for affordable housing, pay for everything, and somebody can develop a forty-four unit townhouse right beside us and not have to pay for any of this. That's totally not fair. If this is gonna be in the UDO, that new people have to pay for these facilities in addition to the abhorrent taxes, then I'm, I can agree to something, but we just don't want to be singled out that we pay for everything and other citizens don't have to pay for it. I think that's only fair.
Well, I think that you've been granted greater densities than others would have been entitled to.
No, sir. Not on a per acre basis, we have not. In total, yes, but not on a, if you take a ten acre tract and you approved a forty-four acre, I mean, a forty-four unit townhouse project the other day, they gave absolutely nothing, no affordable housing, no fire station, no nothing. They can sell those units for ten thousand dollars cheaper than we can sell them. Cause of all that, I just don't think that's fair. I, I hear what you're saying, but at some point, what's fair and what's not fair, you know? If you want to do the special assessment district, sure, we can pay for a lot of these things. But then people outside the district are not paying for them, but yet they get used to the fire station. Something's gotta, something's gotta be equitable here, and we're not being equitable, so.
Well, if fire, I was specifically talking about fire and the police stations within Chatham Park. I don't think that they, that, that would be specifically for Chatham Park area. This one over here in Pittsburgh, of course, serves those parks, which is probably not even ample now anyway, because of course we need a ladder, we will need a ladder, all that we're anticipating. So, and in reference to affordable housing, that's gonna be across the board. You don't have it, that's not just going to be for Chatham Park, that's gonna be across the board, all of Chatham, but you're right, you need to be treated fairly, I agree with that. But I just don't think it would be fair for Pittsburgh to have to go and purchase that property and then turn around and have to build a fire station and a police station.
I agree. I understand where you're coming from. We just want to be treated like every other citizen coming behind us that would buy another hundred acres, or they're gonna be required to build a fire station and give a police station. I mean, I.
But part of those facilities that Pamela Baldwin's talking about have responsibilities for response time, and, and the response time means that it's got to be located near, nearer to, to where Chatham Park is than it currently is served by the downtown fire group, but, and likewise with the EMTs and, and the police as well. So part of it is, is a distance thing, part of it is we need to be able to serve your population if there's so many minutes of, of a disaster happening. And, and so that's what makes it just a little bit different than having somebody that's right inside the nice little four square miles that Pittsburgh occupies today, so.
I understand, but if you had to build a new fire station up near Powell Place or something, how would it get built today? County tax money, right? I mean, how would a new fire station get built today, say up around Northwood School or Powell Place?
I think it'd have to be a combination of the funding sources, but I don't know.
You don't know how it would get built?
No, we haven't contemplated it recently. We've had a lot of work on our plates trying to work.
I mean, but how, I'm asking a question, somebody's gotta know, how would a.
County town taxes.
Huh?
County town taxes.
Exactly. And everybody pays.
Mr. Frant, you're down with us, or we should, we should be the ones that make you fair, and you got a seventy-seven hundred acre planned development that's the only one in the state of North Carolina. It doesn't compare with anything else around here. Not that, it doesn't compare to a hundred acre Powell Place, BDD.
I understand we have a big project, I understand we're being saddled with a lot of extra expenses that smaller projects like Powell Place and other things are not being saddled with. I'm just saying at some point, we've got to say, enough, enough, we can't keep giving everything away. We're giving away all this parkland, and we're giving away roads, water, and sewers coming up next, we're giving away a fortune owner sewer, I mean, it's, it's beginning to get expensive. If it comes down to, you want me to give a fire station or police station, yeah, I can do that, but when is this gonna end? I mean, can we vote on this tonight if I give you a fire station and police station? I mean, we've got to, we've got to get to an end here somewhere. We've been doing this for three months, this element's for three months. We've answered every question you've had.
Well, I, I have to say here that it's been, you're acting like the town is delaying the additional elements, but every time we make a suggestion that maybe we want to change, you come back with numerous changes that we didn't ask for. So to act like the town is delaying you, that's not really taking responsibility for your, your business, because every time we do that, there's been dramatic changes. So I'm sorry, but that's, it's been.
It's been three years, we submitted these three years ago.
And it's been a big process, and it shows a lot of our energy of Chatham Park, and I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna let you blame it all on the town.
I'm not blaming it all on the town, but I'm saying it's been a long, drawn out process. We try to answer your questions, and then we need to lay one more meeting, two more meetings, three more meetings. I just want to bring it to a, we have four elements left to approve.
I understand, but we're looking at something for the town, what we do here is going to impact the town for the next twenty to thirty years, and we have a huge cost on our shoulders to get it right. And I, I don't have any apologies for that, we're doing, we're trying to be very careful in looking after our town, and I'm sure you understand.
Can we get this voted on next meeting if we answer your existing questions, come back with the language?
Let's figure out a way for bought land for fire departments and police departments and public works facility, and I'm, I'm very intrigued here what that solution is.
You do the special assessment district and we'll put it in there. Without that, I don't have the money to pay for all those facilities.
But you are expecting us to buy land from.
I'm expecting you to do what you would normally do with any other subdivision.
It is an exceptional.
I would say if they were bought land, like Powell Place, we wouldn't be buying land from Powell Place to build a fire station that's only gonna serve Powell Place.
No, but if it was ten Powell Places, you would, wouldn't you? If it was needed.
I understand what you're saying too, that if you're a veteran, that you're being expected to pay for a lot of things, but I'm, I'm kind of shuddering to think much on this one.
Whatever you're asking me to do, I'm gonna be up here when the UDO comes up, and I'm gonna ask that you put those same requirements in the UDO. What's fair is what's fair. How you gonna make a new subdivision pay for a fire station, I don't know how that's gonna work. Utility yard, I don't know how that's gonna work. I'm just saying be fair.
I guess we can, yeah. We would like to discuss the special assessments. Would, would definitely have to be, but I, I mean, it's, I think it could be an exceptional tool.
We would love to work it out with you. Is that some discussion you'd like to start?
I think I feel good to, maybe we need to find out why the county dropped it, because they need the town backing, and maybe our, our participation.
And I'd like to understand the requirement, what kind of additional burden it would place on us as far as personnel, as far as just getting through the process, so maybe we could address that. Just trying to think of a vehicle for doing that.
And I wonder if Tom Del Sandro could help understand that.
We have consultants, Medica, that, Bill Sandro, I think you met with him one day, he's an expert, he's done all the ones that's been done in North Carolina to date, he could explain that, that to you. It's basically, you just hire the county to do the bookwork, it's just sending a bill out every year, that's it, that's all it is, just a computer sending a bill out.
And can this consultant manage?
He could also do it.
He could manage this process, obviously for fee.
And the fees paid for out of the assessment.
I think Tom could talk about the mechanics of it as well.
I think the special assessment district would solve a lot of things that Mr. Bonnet is talking about, help a lot of things.
Madam Mayor, can I make just one or two brief comments?
Sure.
On this, the feedback that I received from the county manager regarding where they're at in the process, is they're kind of, kind of waiting to see where town board might weigh in on this. We haven't really had a chance to discuss this in any kind of detail at all since, since the county manager gave a presentation at a workshop a month or three ago. So whenever you're ready to take that up against that standpoint in terms of passing on a gay, male, or indifferent position statement in the county, then, you know, we can, we can certainly address that. Second, as I recall from the county manager's presentation, in previous discussions, I believe fire facilities are not allowable under this special, special assessment district legislation, the other, I don't, are, I don't know about affordable housing yet. That's, that's interesting. I didn't think about it.
My concern was that it was this old style of affordable housing of projects.
Yeah, right.
And the bit of research that I did didn't eliminate whether or not those projects could be a project, a legal project, but not geographically constrained, because I think that's not constructive to put all four people together, I think that's just not, might not be a great.
I don't think it's, if it wasn't paid.
Yeah, it wasn't, true.
That's, yeah, that's all I have, I, it's just, those comments, as far as where the board, where the county board, we, I'm not really sure which that is.
They were too discussing personnel issues about how complex it would be to collect it. It's not just a matter of collecting it, but there's also the whole idea of prepayments towards it, and some people who, there's a, there's a real accounting nightmare.
Yeah, the one thing I do know, I mean, we're obviously not currently configured to do that type of work, we, we work with the county on all of our tax collection, as it is. We would have to reach for a conclusion anyway.
We'll continue the conversation about which man you get it next meeting, and we have Tom and his consultants come, present the mechanics of it, so we get a better feel for how this would work. Perhaps check in with Renee and, and, you know, see where they stand, and if in fact they're disinclined, so we have a better understanding of the field of play here.
But it'd be better to have it as a six o'clock work session, because it would get so late so quickly. Well, Bill will understand if, if age or speeding ticket. Thank you. I think we need to take a bit of a break before we do, completed the performance evaluation form and passing it out to you all, this is the idea that please return it to one sheet of the pages to me, and I will put the other items down there. It's about somebody and Jay, which one is it? And so that's, that's our proposal for the evaluation, whatever, but if you teach them, if you, if you get, there's a lot of space to comment, a lot of contemplation needed to, to do it.
As we discussed, I'm assuming that the board members will be attributable to the statements.
So, is the board interested in taking a break for just a second? Motion by Michael Fioke, second of the, John Bonnet, those in favor of a five minute break, please indicate if I say aye.
Aye, here on the side.
I wonder if somebody will hear the motion.
Re-convince.
Re-convince. The motion to come back into session, I might forget.
Second it.
Richard, Michael Fioke made the motion, John Bonnet seconded it, those in favor please indicate if they say aye. We're back in session. The next order of business is waste park. wastewater. Paul Messick and Brian Brucebeck will lead us in the question, these four agreements that we have.
Well, there are only two.
Well, I know it, but the Ford draft colleagues.
Well, I hope you just consider the clean one, because otherwise it will be confusing if it's not already. If I may, talk about them separately, but I will start with the Chatham Park reservation agreement. What you see is a, basically the same thing that you had seen before a couple of weeks ago, with certain revisions. And if I could just hit the high spots of those, and if you all have any questions about any of that, then we can address those separately. I guess one of the biggest issues was the conditions that were added to the agreement previously that required the town to make certain, take certain actions with regard to the additional elements of the development agreement and the small area plan that was, at that point, in that draft was scheduled for the end of December of this year. The items included in the conditions, which is in paragraph 10 of the draft agreement, the date has been changed to June 30, 2019, although the draft that was in your agenda package still says 18, but it's June 30 of 2019, and it's just the additional elements and the development agreement. The other changes with respect to those conditions were to include the word unreasonably impair the development of the project by either the LGC or DEQ, and so that was acceptable to Chatham Park. The other thing, I guess, which is some, was mostly from a technical standpoint, and Mr. Fiocco mentioned it just briefly earlier. The assumption is that at some point, we will be able to convince the EQ that the 2T rules can be adjusted, because the flow that's actually being produced by customers in Chatham Park and hopefully everywhere in town can be reduced from the typical 120 gallons per day for a single bedroom to something less than that. The net effect of all that is, the more capacity that is not permitted and unused is therefore going to be available for other customers and other use. And so it would be a benefit to the town and to Chatham Park both to have that flow reduction made. We don't know when that will be, or what it will take to make it so, but this agreement, this draft says that we will, the town and Chatham Park will adopt some sort of mutually agreeable methodology to accomplish that. That's in section 7D, and it will be inured to the benefit of both the town and Chatham Park if that were to happen as soon as possible. The other changes to the agreement were, the very last section said that this agreement would be reviewed on a three-year interval, or earlier, if it was agreed to by the parties, to determine if any changes needed to be made in the course of progress of the agreement. Those are, and there's some other technical matters that relate to, again, mostly to the flow reduction. And Mr. Fiocco has brought it to our attention, that I think that with respect to the examples in section 9E, little 3, talks about the situation where they're, with regard to the Sanford capacity fee, if there were a surplus that would be generated by the payment of user fees by the customers of the town, and the surplus would be the difference between what the payment that was due to Sanford and the amount that was actually collected to the user fees. The normal course of that would be that that surplus, that extra amount that had been collected by the town would be paid to Sanford to prepay the balance of the capacity charge. And Mr. Fiocco, I think, at the last meeting suggested that if there were some sort of extenuating circumstances, that the town might like to withhold that surplus and use it for some other important purpose, that you all determined what should happen to that. And this provides that ordinarily that surplus would be paid, like I said, as a prepayment of the balance of the capacity charge, but if the surplus were retained by the town for some extraordinary reason, then Chatham Park would need to be credited for half of that surplus and apply on any future shortfalls that Chatham Park might have. So the text of this indicated that the credit would be to the CPI payment of the 25% that they're paying, but in reality, I think it's better if it applies just to any future shortfall that CPI may have. And I think Chatham Park is agreeable to that. Other than that, that's the essence of the changes that were made since the last time you all considered this. Do you all have any questions about any of that?
Mr. Fiocco, you seem to fool me. Your red pen marks all of that. I thought for sure.
The red parts you see are some of the changes that the board discussed about changing from the, make the CPI payments to the CPI balance, which gives the difference between 25% and 75%. So that's a rearboard thing, and it changes the 2018, 2019. And that's the extent of it.
Great. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, um...
Yeah, I was, okay.
Um, yeah, I'm just a little bit surprised, because I'd like to see it all clean. It really does feel very messy, you know. I'd like to see it clean, I'd like to see the document, and yeah, the difference between 2018 and 2019, but we resolved that.
Can I just ask if you do, if that is, if that's a reasonable request, can I just ask that we be able to forward and approve the copy to DWI for purposes of submitting ERID as we're required to do when you're first? Makes sense?
Well, I can tell you this, there are only about three lines that need to be changed. 18 needs to be 19 on page 11. Again, on page 11, above that, CPI Sanford capacity charge payment in little 3 needs to be Sanford's capacity charge balance. And the balance of that paragraph or section would be credited to the next CPI shortfall.
Rather than the next CPI Sanford capacity charge payment?
So I don't have any red dots, Mr. Fiocco has, but that's what we talked about. And there is some concern to get a June 1 deadline.
On 9C, small fourth on page 10, that's the written description of the equation?
Yes, it needs to be consistent.
Yeah, so that's where it should change the payment and balance also.
Right.
Okay, so before we go back to your motion, Mr. Fiocco.
Yep.
Mr. Messick, help me understand more from Mr. Brucebeck. Which of these agreements must be submitted to Water Authority tomorrow?
The Sanford, the one that deals with the Sanford force main.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Mr. Messick.
Okay.
Thank you for pausing, Mr. Fiocco.
I flipped over and thought you were...
I'll restate the motion.
Next. Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This first. Motion carries now.
Okay, with respect to the, what's called the master services agreement between the town and Old North State Water Company, OLC, again, you've seen most of this before, and the changes since the last version of this that you reviewed previously is on paragraph, in section 7. The second full paragraph of that talks about additional consideration for the use of the MPDES permit that Old North State agrees to pay the town $25,000 within 10 days after the operations at the facilities are begun, and this is to be spent on repairs or other improvements to reduce the inflow and infiltration into the town's system. So that is a new matter. The other new matter is at the, on exhibit B, at the tail end of the agreement, where it talks about compensation to Old North State with respect to the services that it would provide. The current version of this agreement says that during the first two years of the agreement, that 95% of the monthly user fees collected by the town would be dispersed to Old North State, and a 5% balance would be retained by the town. And, but the first 10, after the first 10 years, the percentages would change from 95 to 93% to Old North State, and from 5 to 7% to be retained by the town. Again, this agreement contemplates the flow reduction, and again, that's a very important issue for Old North State, as well as Chatham Park, as well as the town of Pittsboro. So it's incumbent upon everybody's perspective to make that happen as quickly as possible and to cooperate and work together on that. If there are any other questions about this agreement, I'll be glad to try to answer those. The other changes are mostly technical in terms of some of the legal language, but the essence of it is still the same, that Old North State would build two, the facilities in two phases. The first being the 250,000 gallon per day facility, and then the second phase would be up to the 499. And it would provide wastewater to be chlorinated by the town for send to 3M, so we can satisfy that requirement. I don't know what else. If you have any other questions about any of that, try to address that.
Paul, did you have any language regarding the 80-90 rule that you could mention and discuss?
No, but I did mention to them that you were interested in some sort of condition on that, and I was not able to explain that fully.
Okay. Well, so if for whatever reason Sanford arrangement doesn't work, it doesn't happen, if for whatever reason, that the town would then be in a position where it would have to have $5 to $6 billion on our existing plan, just to get it to, to be able to meet the standards to continue to discharge the Rookson Creek. This agreement with Old North State would guarantee to them the ability to discharge 499,000 gallons under our PDS permit, and we would have 1.25 billion gallons to discharge. And if we're stuck with our old plan, we will be subject to the 80-90 rule. And I'm suggesting that Old North State, if they are working underneath our NPS permit, and we don't have the additional capacity through the Sanford agreement, that they be restricted to the 80-90 rule, just like we are, instead of them getting full benefit of 499,000 gallons, and we being stuck with 80% of 750. So honestly, it's an absolute worst-case scenario. It's probably a meteorite hitting and a alien abduction occurring at the same time, but it's a possibility, and I think we should protect, and it's an equitable protection. So that's what I would suggest, that if in fact Sanford agreement doesn't happen, that the 499,000 gallons are subject to the 80-90 rule, just like our... I don't know if I explained it any better.
We've got lots of engineers in the road, but as I understand it, we have a permit capacity of 1.25 million gallons going into the creek now. If we're held to 80% of that, assuming that we had two plants that were permitted, then that would be 100,000 gallons, or a million gallons a day. So I think that Mr. Fiocco is saying that if the town is restricted to 80% of 750, then Old North State should perhaps be restricted to 80% of 499. I don't know whether that means misery loves company or what.
Well, we'd all have to, we'd all have to work together, really, to get to the Haught River at that point.
Yes, yes.
It's reasonable to get to whatever that point is, Haught River, like rest of your district makes the most sense. And I think everyone understands, everybody, so all the town, if they're working together.
Yeah. So I just ask that I'd like to be able to...
So I think that this is where I'm starting to wonder what use could be brought out of a firm, clear, legally binding plan to actually activate the markets for reuse water. Does that not give us that flexibility? If we're not having to discharge it, if we can guarantee to the state we're not having to discharge it, if we know for a fact that there's markets there or in the creation, or there's a plan for markets to be built for, developed for the reused water, then we could reallocate some portion of the PDS discharge permit. Is my understanding correct?
I think it's based upon that permanence of usage of that water.
And so typically, that might happen at other Old North State facilities with a spray field, I think, or other water, private water utilities.
It's a permitted activity, just like your NPS permit, is, you know, there's a certain amount of flow that's associated. So our spray irrigation fields, those are actually permitted as part of it.
Yeah, I mean, it, yes, but it's a little more complicated. And part of the complication is introduced as to whether you have control over the disposition of that reclaimed water. When you have a dedicated spray field, you can guarantee you're putting X gallons a day out there over some period of time, because it's your land, it's restricted site, et cetera. When it's uncontrolled usage, residents irrigating their yard, you have no control over what they do and how much they use.
and how much they use and that kind of thing. Exactly. So the state doesn't look at that as firm capacity in terms of calling that permitted capacity, but you're still getting the benefit of whatever is really getting to your plant in terms of that 80-90 rule. So the fact that it is displaced and it doesn't show up at the plant, it shows up in your flows at the actual plant. And the way your allocated capacity remaining is calculated is based on what's actual at the plant plus whatever you have obligatory, but obligated, but not yet tributary. And whatever's left you get to allocate. So you get the benefit of that, but you won't get it graded as firm capacity. I think there would be a way over time to demonstrate enough empirical evidence that this is a reliable amount that gets used. Then I think you could get some of that translated into permitted capacity. But it's really, at that point, kind of an academic exercise because you're still mostly governed by the actual flow and the 80-90 rule anyway. And so you probably are going to be fine. But we've talked about this before. It's in every, again, another one of those things that's in everybody's best interest to try to use it to the maximum possible, both for your wastewater capacity and your water capacity. Does that make sense for us, anything stupid? They're still young.
Not really.
Not as young as it was.
Mr. Bruce, I have one question. Will you look into the 5%? Does that cover our administration costs?
Yeah, I think, I think we agree that 5% is a good start for covering our administration costs and our field costs. And I think one of the iterations, and I don't remember whether it's the clean cut, one of the iterations did allow for us to review that after a certain amount of time.
Yes, this Old North State agreement, again, is also reviewable on a three-year schedule or earlier if it's agreed to by the parties.
If we find out we're doing more work, then we should talk about it.
Any further questions?
So, um, section three. So it's a challenge to think about the reuse water because it is both a resource and it is something to be disposed of and is regular. And our NPDS permit is the sole means of disposal. It seems that's economically viable. But we have a contract to sell to 3M. And we've been assured that reclaimed water would be provided to town for sale to 3M. But this, this contract, Mr. Messing, help me if I'm getting this wrong. It says when wastewater flows to the ONSWC facilities exceed 50,000 gallons per day, Old North State Water Company shall send to the town up to the maximum amount of treated wastewater produced by the Old North State Water Facilities. And then it says that it will send any additional reclaimed water first to customers in the CPI service area.
Yes, sir.
So, um, that limits town's ability to sell to 3M?
No, sir.
No?
The first reuse water, reclaimed water will go to 3M. Then it will be available for other customers in the service area. And then if that's not needed, it will be available for other town customers. And then if that's not necessary, it'll go in the creek. 3M first, service area for.
3M up to 50,000.
No.
15,000?
No, sir. 50,000 is the threshold. I guess you got to make the plant work and you need more than 50,000 to make it work. I mean, it's obviously going to require some coordination between the Old North State facility and, I mean, the existing town facility is going to have to stay in operation at least until Sanford line is completed. So it won't, there will be some capability for Pittsburgh plant to make reuse water as well until there's some overlap, so.
How do we ensure that we're not going to get stuck selling potable water to 3M at reclaimed water prices? Can we create a timeline? One, you probably. Handoff that you described that we're going to have to work together.
Well, I think the timeline is that the Pittsburgh plant is going to have to continue to operate until Sanford is complete. So we know that timeline and that's a year or two before that's going to be in effect. They should be producing water well within that period of time. And when their flow is enough to satisfy 3M, you just chlorinate it at the Pittsburgh plant and send it on. The 3M contract needs to be renegotiated anyway. But obviously, if there's not enough reclaimed water and 3M has a contractual obligation, we have a contractual obligation to serve them, we got to give them something, so.
So you're envisioning a scenario where we might sell them potable water instead of reuse?
Well, I think it's up there in the alien abduction and the meteorite situation. But yes, I guess it's possible. It's getting crowded, I think.
So do you have a parking lot that's right up to speed, addressed in renegotiation of the contract to 3M?
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that point yet with 3M. I mean, they want to extend off, the only thing I've discussed with 3M and it's been quite some time since we've done that is the term of the agreement. We haven't talked about rates or urgency for that.
Are we done? I do have more questions. I'm just, you know, trying to go back through my questions as digesting the discussion that we had a few minutes. So in our contract with Sanford, we had revisit periods opportunity to do additional financial analysis on that agreement. Are we able, in this structure, Mr. Messing, to revisit the financial impacts or benefits to town on some regular basis?
Well, there's a 20-year schedule for compensation to Old North State, if that's what you meant, already.
We added paragraph 33 about reviewing the agreement.
Right, we can review it.
Same, same language in the Sanford.
Right.
Okay, okay, that's, that's good. So. Maybe someone can remind you of page of the NPS. It's paragraph seven on page six on the clean cut. So the new paragraph has additional consideration for use of the town's NPS permit, payment of $25,000. What do others feel about that?
There was some evidence in the town records that the NPDES permit engineering cost was $18,000.
68,000.
68,000, excuse me.
And what was the cost to be environmentally impacty?
My assumption that that's included, but I'm not sure about that.
I've been told over the half a million dollars.
I'm sure that's not around.
Are that Hobbs firm, are they even a business school? Hobbs not true?
Don't believe so.
Mr. Bruce, Beck, you were able to scan the paper copy that you had of that EIS? Is that how you got that document back up online?
I was, I received an electronic copy and I used the PDF software that I had to convert it to a scanned version.
Wonderful, thank you for that.
Well, John asked this question, which was, how do we feel about the inclusion of a valuation that, that you're still fond to answer the question?
Valuation or the value assigned to it?
Yeah, the value, it depends on the town.
So it's my understanding that Brian, you had to do a bunch of research and came up with one document that was $68,000. So that's the basis, my understanding of basis. Would it some?
I'm not sure everyone's familiar with the value of the document. It's just like saying, you know, that's money getting back out before you're back out getting evaluated.
But you know, what kind of this argument or discussion about even value? I don't even see a value there because the town is getting sewer capacity. We're using the NPDS permit that we need purchased in order to get the town capacity to treat more than 100. And discharge it. That, that there's a value. We're making use of an investment we made to provide sewer capacity to the town.
So once that, that NPDS is used, will we not be limited then to the parts of Pittsburgh that are not in the PDD? Their growth will be limited by our share of the Sanford Forest. And I still haven't got a clear understanding of what portions of town will be able to pump sewer, sewage to U-Banks Road?
Pump sewer?
Yeah. If we need to use it.
For treatment?
If we need to use sewage treatment, if we need to use capacity of that U-Banks Road plant? Non-PDD, non-PDD lands.
I think this contract is, yeah, the service area for that facility is the.
So nothing outside of town.
Right.
Outside of the EIS, excuse me.
Correct.
Nothing in the old part of town. So then we will, the old part of town will be limited in its growth to 1.75 billion gallons per day capacity that we still retain in the Sanford Forest. So we're going to give up our NPDS. To the use only by customers of the PDD.
Which will retain customers.
How about all the folks in town paid for that NPDS hoping that they were going to get more capacity? We're going to get basically to have the difference in capacity. The 80-90 rule.
We're talking about the 322 million? That's the only NPDS.
So then you're putting a cost on the rest of the town of adding to go to the harbor.
That's one of the requirements or options. So the 68,000 can be divided by 3.22 million. That's the NPDS permit. 3.22 million. 25 to Rosson, 197.
But I keep hearing that discharge is, oh, it's basically an outstart. And it's also on in their neck of the woods. So we're going to pump through Chatham Park, through the PDD, from all town. Do you like that discharge point? Does that make sense?
I'm talking about what there is, what the NPDS permit is.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, and honestly, I could show you a point on a map. Further downstream from our existing plant, that would make everything a hell of a lot more cost effective because it wouldn't utilize pumps and use rally. But that was not what our NPDS permit is. And, you know.
Well, we could figure out a way to utilize something better than we already have.
And you, are you suggesting that charging more than $25,000 would be the way to do that?
I don't know the way. I don't have a message, but I don't see a message here. But I don't see the only message here. And I don't see town's interest addressed here.
Specifically with the amount paid?
Yeah, twenty-five thousand dollars, in my understanding, is why we requested an appraisal for this permit. And I'm glad staff grabbed the look at you, since I'm an appraisal for it.
Yeah, I don't have an appraisal. It seems that the NPDS permit, so it only has one value, it's not a fungible commodity. It does one thing only, allows you to discharge treated effluent to the state standards into the street. That's all it does.
Yep.
Town paid for it and town, through a private contractor who's going to operate a treatment facility, now has the ability to provide additional sewer capacity to the town within a zoning district called the PDD.
Which the old part of town will be able to access until this Sanford Forest Plant is constructed. We won't have any growth, and at that point we'll only have the growth between eighty-nine rule and a hundred percent utilization of that capacity and the pipeline.
Well, actually with this plant in permitting state, we do get additional capacity right now, and because we go beyond. The state allows us to go beyond eighty percent right now, so we just got 175,000 more gallons.
Okay, so up to what, a hundred percent or ninety percent?
Up to ninety.
And when we go to the Sanford Forest Plant, we'll get a hundred percent.
Oh, fine. But that's still limited growth, we are still giving up our only valuable sewage treatment asset for growth in the PDD, with growth limited outside of the PDD.
I don't hear you refuting that point.
I agree that the amount of growth potential outside the PDD is less than within the PDD.
True, true.
Right?
Yeah, I don't know how to work this out, Mr. Joko. I don't, I don't have the solutions. But with my lack of engineering experience, with my lack of resource economics, I'm able to see the outlines of the opportunity cost. There will be a cost to the rest of town to engage in this contract. I've asked this board, supported unanimously, that we get an appraisal. We haven't gotten appraisal. That was nine months ago. If we had an appraisal, I think that this contract would be much better informed by them.
But last meeting, you were agreeing that this was the method to be used to establish value.
I agreed with what was suggested.
That there would be research and how much it costs to get the NPDS permit.
Did I say that that would be the end of the deal?
I thought that would be the way to establish value.
I did not intend to say that I thought that that was the end of the deal. I mean, yeah, I think what I said was, it's not that hard, it's not rocket science. I can visualize. The easy way to assess, appraise the value of it is look at costs, look at what it's costing to get it. And I'm telling you, somebody has told me that costs is a lot more than that for the ass. So maybe we didn't look into the invoices to PDIS.
Randy, can you add?
Yes, Pam and I were on the board at that time. We did hire Hobbs and Upchurch, they also did the project down to Three M, which was one of the reasons we hired them. But this board did not pay $500,000 for anything. Now, if someone paid that, it could have been the county or somewhere else. But I can assure you, Commissioner Bonnet, that nobody in this board, we didn't have the budget. It was $68,000, and there was an environmental impact statement, and there was another study as part of it. And the final bill was $68,000. So, I'm not sure, who spent that other money and where it came from, but it was not spent by the town of Pittsburgh.
My bill for the EIS was?
Was $68,000. That's what we paid here. I remember it very clearly, I remember Fred Hobbs coming here, who used to be a senator, you know, years ago in the General Assembly. I remember the young kid that used to come here and be the military. Pam probably remembers the briefings we used to get. They also did a study of our water plant, there are a bunch of different things they did in that era. I'd also like to add just two things before I rest. One, I think, Commissioner Bonnet, it's one of the key things to address what you're concerned about is the issue of when they get to the new allocation from 120 gallons per bedroom to somewhere down to 60 or 70, that's actually going to free up more capacity, as Mr. Messick said, across the system, which would be very helpful to what you're getting at. And two, I think you have to think about the possibility of getting more capacity through pumps or other things to Sanford beyond the two million gallons, which this board has heard in the past, which you've been so focused on so many things, you just haven't had the bandwidth to get into that. But you could actually go to three million gallons there, and that would be something to address what you're getting at.
You're talking about the interbasin transfer?
You may or may not have to deal with interbasin transfer rules if we end up taking, you know, water from them. I mean, you have some flexibility, I'm just positing to you that there is some flexibility that Luton has set in that design, going all the way back to when we first met with him when I was married, so.
Well, what you're saying, Randy, is that with the same pipe and ground, change your pumps, and you can send that much more water to Sanford. And yes, it's a, interbasin is a net equation. So, if water's coming back over the ridge, more of the effluent can go the other direction.
Isn't that going to be years in construction to find the water that?
Depends on how the water's getting, where it's going, just has to go over the ridge.
Over the line, over the ridge.
Now, over the ridge, where water would flow this way versus that way.
So Commissioner Bonnet, you're really banking the chance to think this contract that North State should, Old North State should also serve Old Pittsburgh.
That could be a solution. And?
So that if, as you call it, Old Pittsburgh needs additional capacity, we are allowed to take part, to take part in the Old North State.
And actually, I don't believe that.
Thank you.
If that's what we've been after all this time, capacity.
I mean, I just hate to see a situation where growth is only possible in the PDD.
I think that should be an option, if, oh, if you're willing, we can outtake traditional Pittsboro. Need more. Need additional capacity, that we have the option.
Let's all do it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, because I don't think that there's any part of Old Pittsburgh that's accessible to this plant. So I'm not sure how you're going to get it there. The Christian Village is served by a pump station now. Theoretically, it's the closest customer in the town to this facility now. Any new facilities, I mean, I'm not sure how you would make a connection and where you would make it and who's going to pay for it.
I don't remember who said it, but somebody said, it's as easy as falling off a log. Whatever pipe gets built from U-Banks Road to the outfall in our small street plant, just another pipe right next to it, off raw sewage up the hill.
I don't know whether, I mean, there's two pipes that are going to be coming anyway. There's going to be raw untreated sewage that's coming, that's going to bypass this plant when it's full. And then there's going to be the treated effluent that's going to be coming to be chlorinated or put in the creek, one or the other.
I just want to make sure that we're looking out for our Chris friends. John, here's, you know, this complicated stuff. My question, what is the cost for access?
All of the options, you know, all of the options that we mentioned, whether there's any additional, any additional issues. So that's going to help?
I think I've asked for that. How do we get access to the town? How does the old part of town get access to the main street? I know, there's a town, access in the right hand. A year ago. How do we, I haven't expressly said how, what it costs, but I said, how do we get access?
Yes, sounds like a plan.
So we're talking about doing that. Taking this stuff, you've got to give it a little incentive.
Let's not pose any options.
No, but let's make some offers.
Great.
Can you do that, we both have these contracts to do that. Because we need that, come online.
Kind of dress up, old, new, this, that, us, we. This is Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh sewer is not flushing. Yeah, it's not flushing, it's all flushing going down. If a Pittsburgh customer buys a lot, say, somewhere around Chatham Park, he wants to put sewage, wants to build a house and flush sewage, he can send it, if it's feasible, to send it to the North State plant. The North State plant will take it. He will have to pay his fees to get into the North State plant, just like he would have had to pay to get in the fees to the town plant. And the town would bill him every month fifty dollars or whatever, and it would go appropriately as done. So, anybody in Old Pittsburgh, or New Pittsburgh, or New Annex in Pittsburgh could flow into the North State plant. They would have to pay the fees. There could be a big amount of sewer that's sent down to the North State plant that never makes it into the plant. It goes down a 20-inch pipe, and then it's diverted and pumped to Sanford, to the old plant and to Sanford. So there could be a lot of flow going. The North State plant will have 499,000 gallons to sail. If that's, so whoever, except whoever, a Chatham Park resident, a Powell Place resident, whoever that sends it down there. So, you're correct. If it could get down there, they don't mind taking it as long as the person pays the fees. There'll be a lot more sewer going down there that bypasses that plant, because once they hit 499, you got to pump all the rest of Sanford. And it's going to be a million, 250,000 gallons will be pumped. Does that answer your question? We're not saying that you can't, somebody new can't be a customer. We're just saying that it's feasible if the pipes are there and the gravity and all that people, and they just have to pay their fees, just like they would have to pay the town if they're a new customer.
Mr. Bonnet, second query is, of course, may define the service area as Chatham Park PDD and the additional land added to Chatham Park PDD and additional land in or near the vicinity of Chatham Park PDD that's owned by a Chatham Park investor that's affiliated entities. And then says, and any other land mutually agreed by Old North State and the town to be part of the service area. So, it does contemplate that there can be service for customers outside of Chatham Park, but those, infrastructure would have to be built by whoever wanted the service and get to the lines and, as Mr. Smith said, pay the same fees as everybody else is going to pay it. It's going to be treated at that point.
If that's, from what you're indicating here, that is inclusive, and that's good.
Would you agree with that, Mr. Lefter?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. The critical factor is the infrastructure to get it from the old town to the new plant. I mean, as long as that can be done technically and economically, then it's going to work. But as a practical matter, people in the old towns or any development outside of Chatham Park is probably going to go to Sanford directly, rather than try to worry about going to this plant. But there's some non-Chatham Park properties that are, one in particular, along the outfall, go into this plant. So if that property were ever developed, they could access the Old North State plant. Old North State's going to be charging, it's mentioned in here that there's going to be a capacity charge for the Old North State plant as well. They're going to be issued vouchers when people pay for those, that capacity. And so if a non-Chatham Park customer wants to hook on, they're going to have to buy the capacity from Old North State and pay the fees and provide for the infrastructure to get to the outfall or however they're going to get to the plant. It's certainly a possibility, I don't know that it's terribly practical, but it certainly is a possibility, that's a concern.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, could we get Commissioners Joko's language figured out here so we can have what to put in there?
Get the Sanford pipeline, or the ability for the town to deliver a lot of that fluid via pump station in Forest Bank to Sanford. Does not occur. Old North State will be limited to the eighty-nine rule. Old North State will be limited to the eighty to ninety rule.
So what we would say would be that this wastewater treatment plant would be, would be subject to the eighty to ninety.
Yes, we'll have.
And we'll put it in there, but technically Sanford doesn't exist. It already will because it only has a discharge. So it will already be under the same eighty to ninety rule that the Town Plant is, unless Sanford happens. But we'll, we'll put it in there, right?
Right, but I don't want a contract between these two entities to say, yes, you can do the same.
Or.
Hundred percent and limit us to less than eighty to ninety.
Can I just, can I ask you one word to what you, what you offered there? And that would be just joint, we would jointly be subject to the eighty to ninety?
Right, and this will, and Tim's saying DEQ's going to enforce that, but I don't want to have a contract written up that says, you can do more than we can.
Correct.
Because DEQ will be happy that eighty percent. I want both of them to be subject to the same.
And the reality is, even with your plant, you ought to be able to slip the eight because it's part of your ER that you were evaluating Sanford versus to your own plant or whatever. You were already in planning for an expansion. So you've already checked the box for the nine.
Right.
And any, I mean.
So can I read back to you what I have written down? Let's see. If I captured, which Town's ability to send wastewater treatment to Sanford does not occur, the ONSWC facilities, that's how it's defined in the agreement, and Town WWTP, that's also a defined term in your Town Wastewater Treatment Plant, will be jointly subject to the eighty to ninety rule.
Jointly and concomitantly, does that make it better for you?
Jointly or what?
Concomitally. Jointly or, something to equate that, both same, playing by the same rule.
Can y'all read it one more time?
I think he's okay. I'm not sure about concomitally, but that's an engineering term, I'm sure.
I don't know, I just, I saw a funny look on Commissioner's face and it sounded like maybe it hadn't touched his exact definition.
Shall we add that as paragraph thirty-four?
Yes, that's where it goes.
Motion to approve the agreement with the additional paragraph thirty-four. Just stated by Kim.
I'm eager to see the paragraph not support of approving this agreement tonight. It's not necessary for Sanford force main deal with the plum fund. I think that we need to work on it. So we all have confidence that it's clear that we're best to the folks who have this.
Is there a second to Michael Fioke's motion?
I don't feel like we've got adequate support to address these concerns about opportunity costs to the rest of Town. It goes back to the question of the value of the asset which is in PDD as permitted. We are going to be putting ourselves in a situation of vulnerability. We're relying completely, I mean, we're going out of services.
So there's a lot of other plans.
That's a done deal. That's right. That's shit they say.
We're in charge of two million gallons today.
Under contract.
You mean the treatment.
Yeah, a contract. Yeah.
So sending two million down gallons today.
This is another contract.
Instead of sending it to Jordan Lake, we're sending it for the downstream.
It's another contract. So we are relinquishing controls over the growth of all areas outside of PDD. And this is, this is complicated stuff and it's quarter to midnight and, yeah, I just, I just want to make absolutely certain that we will do everything we can to ensure that we're keeping out the interest of the folks who live in this.
Well, I think it's the most cost effective way we've been able to increase capacity in the Town that's been added for over a long time. So I think we are doing very well by this.
But it doesn't address my concern about opportunity costs in limiting growth in areas outside of PDD.
If we postpone growth, do you feel like the next time we have a meeting, that you could cut that?
I don't know. I don't know that we're going to get the kind of analysis that we need. I think we really need to understand better what it is that we're agreeing to. I'm intrigued that there's language that would allow for parts of Town outside of PDD to deliver sewage to this plant. I get eye rolls and scoffs that it's not practical for staff, but I'm seeing a situation that is boxing us in.
I don't quite understand that, Mr. Barnes. I have to be honest with you. I don't understand.
We're working on this Sanford force. Yes. And even once that's built, our access to that Sanford force main will be limited by the contract we just approved.
Because you're separating old Town with the PDD or Chatham Park as being something separate than the Town.
And the Town will have more advantage than the other town.
I think we need to keep an eye on the future while understanding the current conditions and circumstances.
I agree, but without any growth, we're not going to have revenue to be able to boost anything.
Is that growth going to help us replace all of the rotten sewer and water lines in Town, in the old part of Town?
Traditional.
Other lines possible.
Possible, yeah.
And our computer default.
The only way the Town can get revenue is through tax. Through taxes, I mean, no other sources, obviously, but the line of share is through old taxes. The only way we increase our old tax will by increasing property is by town limits of taxation.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm speaking both as a resident of the county, even though I have an address that says Pittsburgh. I'm outside the ETJ. But I recognize what's being proposed here provides tremendous opportunity for the Town of Pittsburgh. And being also on the board for the Economic Development Corps, we're interested in the growth for Pittsburgh as well as Chatham County. And to your point, Commissioner Barnes, I would love to see more opportunity for business growth in downtown Pittsburgh as well as other parts of Pittsburgh. But I think the things that you're discussing in terms of opportunity costs are a function also of the challenge that you haven't had the monies, the funds available in the Town to do some of the things you'd like from an infrastructure perspective until now. So I kind of look at this as going, well, on the one hand, you've got an opportunity to extend your sewer and water capacity, which is going to service Chatham Park. And if you service Chatham Park and they build what they're proposing, you are going to get a tremendous amount of new tax revenue. And with that, there is a corresponding obligation, I think, of the Town to plan accordingly with that new tax revenue. How do you want to spend it? How do you want to facilitate the growth across the entire community of the Town as well as add staff to accommodate the growth of the things that are coming across your desks? Because you've got a lot of things coming at you today, which, you know, here we are at midnight discussing things that I know have taken a tremendous amount of time to get to this point. But on the other hand, just as you're trying to build capacity in a water and sewer system, you need to build capacity in this Town. And you need to build capacity in staff. And you need to build capacity for future infrastructure. And I think the one way you're going to get it is by helping Chatham Park succeed in adding growth in the PDD, which is going to fuel the tax revenues for the Town. So I think you've got to look at it in stages. I don't think you can accommodate everything that you want to do in one fell swoop by saying you want to, you know, enable growth in Old Pittsburgh. It can't happen all simultaneously. There's not enough capacity here to deal with. I wish there were. I wish there were more opportunities for us to put more small businesses here. But over time, we'll get there.
I really appreciate those comments, though. Keep going back to practice, we don't really have a master plan. I think I'm beating a dead horse. We have, if we keep hearing that we're going to have these revenues, but we don't have the analysis to understand to what extent that is going to help us address our current needs that have been so long in the making. And, yeah, I am skeptical of the idea that growth pays for itself. Because eventually, all this infrastructure's going to have to be replaced, repaired in the future. We don't have the analysis that comforts me that that's going to work. But that's a much bigger conversation than this current issue, which is that we have this one asset and.
My closing comment, I mean, I think this is very analogous to the old question of how do you, how do you need an elephant? And it's one, one bite at a time. I mean, you've got a lot to chew off here. There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of things to consider, but I mean, you've got some immediate opportunities here to move this forward. And I believe that if you can continue to move it forward, you have greater opportunities than to consider down the line. It's easy to become somewhat paralyzed if you, if you get stuck trying to think about, how do I solve all these problems at once? It's, it gives you major headaches. And the other day, it's, it's hard to do. So my only suggestion would be try to take it one step at a time. And I think you've got some opportunity here to move this thing forward with the steps that are along.
All right. So how do we get an understanding of the costs of utilizing the language that we have that allows territories outside of the PDD to gain access to the vector of facility? What are you asking?
Is there a set cost to hooking on to the, to the U-Banks Road line for people who are adjacent to it?
That's whatever the cost that they're charging the other customers at the time. We'll charge exactly the same amount. We have not set that cost yet. Pamela, a good example would be like Ms. Woodson's piece of property that would flow gravity into this plant. If she wanted to develop that, she could come buy sewer from Old North State at the same price everybody else is buying. That's just a, I just thought about that property and her sister behind it, that property could flow in here. I'd be glad to take it. It's just guys, they got to pay the fees to pay for the plant, which aren't cheap.
And so before the Sanford force main is built, will the lines between the Small Street Plant and the U-Banks Road Plant be in drought?
Yes.
And so let's just, this ball growth in downtown is seen in the face and we need to pump up though. What are the engineering, what's that? What would that be like?
You could reverse, we've got a raw sewage line, you could reverse the pump, pump it back to the plant. She can't pump over four hundred ninety-nine thousand gallons once they hit that peak. It's all engineered and feasible.
And I think that's the question is, I think it's hard to imagine you're going to, unless something burps and it comes installs dramatically to Sanford, I don't see where you're going to need that capacity for some of the traffic. But if you did, it's a question of configuring a pump station down a small street. They can pump through that raw force main, eventually it's going to carry the load to Sanford. It's four ninety-nine and it has to go in that direction. So at that point, they can come the other direction.
Well, I, of course, I don't have a vote, but one of the things that I think about is a cooperative kind of relationship so that in the future, we can rely upon you all to coordinate more completely with us. For example, you've talked about perhaps increasing the number of gallons going to Sanford. You've talked about more cooperative, we instead of us and them kind of thing. And I would really like to be there. I'd really like to be at a point where, where we can work together. And that's, that's what I'm sitting here thinking about.
Is it necessary that both the bank agreement and the Old North State agreement be paid tonight? Both of them have to be submitted after my June first draft draft?
No, ma'am, the June first date doesn't have anything to do with the Old North State agreement.
Well, one's tied to the other one. You know, Old North State's going to produce reuse water for three M, they're tied together. So one depends on the other one. Can't do one without the other.
But you did submit the bank agreement to.
Well, I know we're going to submit it to San Pittsburgh. Yeah, absolutely. I've been here the whole time, you know, during the time we tried to get this permit, which was a long, long process. So I definitely am assured that we're not giving it permission away. We'll take it back if we need to. So, but I just want to know faithfully to everything if committed as a thing.
Well, we have a motion on the floor with the second. And we've had a good amount of discussion since then. Does the, does the board wish to proceed to a vote?
I'm not sure how to resolve Mr. Barnes's concerns. I mean, if there could be a specific question, I mean, other than having to see the text that Mr. Eagle was reading, I mean, I don't know anything specific that you want to address. I mean, if you can tell us what that is, then we can do that.
Let's change 25,000 to 68,000. Let's let's somehow ensure that we have an agreement that if the weird circumstances come about and we need to pump from the Small Street Plant up to the U-Banks Road Plant, that we can do that.
I think we had that question for, was it part of their, part of the design?
I was just looking at that a minute ago. The conversation to this point that I've had with Luke deals with some sort of, some sort of issue or problem with the Sanford force main would have drastically interrupt service in about eight different scenarios that they came up with. None of those scenarios would involve at this point in time needing to go pumping back to the Old North State facility. There would be, they would look at means of actually utilizing Sanford force main, fixing problems with Sanford force main, or needing to go back to the North State facility. So to answer your question, we haven't really got to that point of analysis yet, but after eight scenarios, I don't, it's looking, I'm trying not to use the meteorite or alien induction analogy again, but it's looking bad and probable. The question that keeps going through my mind is what scenario, and this is, again, part of that exercise, I think, with Luke, what scenario would require us, aside from, you know, an issue of convenience and, you know, having a property that is more better suited to look on to the Old North State facility, what scenario would require us to be to pump back to the Old North State facility? We're having trouble coming up with that or we haven't reached that.
Well, I think that we're assuming that everything is hunky dory with Sanford. That's that underlines probably all of those eight scenarios I would imagine.
Yeah, things like pump failure, line failure. I don't know, you mean if on the Sanford side of things?
Yeah, in terms of our agreement with Sanford. Greater, sure, greater flexibility and capabilities, less constraints on growth for the entirety of town.
How exactly would you express that? Because I don't understand. Less constraints, I mean, I'm not sure this constrains growth in the older part of town in the first place, but what would be less than this?
This does constrain growth to the older part of town because the older part of town relies upon Small Street, which will be essentially being commissioned or repurposed. At some point, we hope and expect to pump to Sanford using the Sanford force main, but even then, capacity for the use of the Sanford force main is contractually obligated in percentages to Channel Park investors and to town. The old part of town, excuse me. Correct?
Based upon a percentage of money that people are paying for that project.
Sure. Yeah. So how is it not limiting everything in town of Pittsburgh outside of the PDD?
Well, you're increasing the capacity that is available for Old Town by sending it to Sanford.
When we reach that point, how is it not limiting growth in the older part of town?
Because you will be able to use
The rest of the ETJ.
You will be able to use the full 750,000 gallons, which you're not able to use now. And that would be true irrespective of this agreement for Old North State. Old North State has not, doesn't change that dynamic at all. You're paying 32.5% or 37.5%. You get 37.5% of the two million gallons of capacity. That's got nothing to do with it. This is an additional 500,000 or 499,000 gallons of capacity.
Which is made possible through the use of the EPTD's permit.
It's made possible by the fact that somebody's paying a whole lot of money to build it.
Yeah.
Once the, once the effluent goes to Sanford, it's not going, it's not going in the creek in the first place. So the permit is not going to be used by the town at all. So where is the value there? At least they're going to be using 500,000 gallons of it. And you'll still have 750,000 available if you want to build a plant to discharge it to the creek. I don't see how this contract constrains the town at all.
I guess I need to re-read it. Gets the point, or your understanding that it doesn't limit us.
No, sir. You don't have that capacity available now. So how can it be limited? You're going to gain 500,000 gallons of capacity for town customers, plus the two million that's going to go to Sanford. So when this is over with, you'll have two and a half million gallons of capacity. That seems to be a benefit for the town, not a constraint. But if you think this is constraining, I mean, what can we change to make it less, sir?
May I?
Yeah.
I would suggest that the constraint you have is what we've said for a long time is once the decentralized plan is full, once Sanford is full, there needs to be a phase three. By definition, the growth is planned. That's what's missing. That's the constraints. And if I understand it correctly, you're already participating jointly with the county and perhaps some other entities to look at a comprehensive, longer range plan for everybody, including you. One option you already have is use the other 2.75 MGD you're going to have in a discharge permit that you still own and control. There may be something better that comes out of that study. That's what will leave everybody's constraints at that point. My own myopic view, that's the way I see the constraints. Where I see, you're already moving to work on that. That will not be the end of it. There will be another need after that. This gives us the ability to make a big step forward.
Well, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, which is to approve this agreement with the extra section 34 that has been dictated. If there's no further discussion, I think we need to proceed to a vote, partly because of the talent.
Yes.
And so I would say, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. The So we now proceed to
Yeah, you have copies of my update. I just want to look at. You didn't ask me if you have any slides. Otherwise, I'm just going to need copies of the budget.
Okay, that's your update.
I will say that what you just, just a quick time to talk about yourself. What you do have is a, is a balanced budget. Obviously, it's not a violation because you're working on it. Until then, you realize that there may be 25 things for running circles, which maybe you weren't. Please review it. I would encourage you to ask.
Drive safely.
It'll hold us asking.
You can't.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah, Mardi construction on Hurro Road. I got an inquiry on that. Progress, progress timeline, like that.
Yeah, we, as you recall, we did, actually did a contract with I-D structures. What I can do is get from them, I think attached the last contract was a timeline that's going to be pushed back a little bit. But I would expect the construction on that would begin sometime this summer. So probably, once we circle back with I-D structures, I know we kept I-D structures very busy in the last few weeks.
Yeah.
So I'm sure
During, you're getting easements needed for that project?
I haven't heard that to be due.
Are they going to use the same pathway?
That's my understanding. It's an upgraded equipment. You know, there, the work, what I can't answer is, is any work would be on the individual services and properties. So we'll get some more feedback from I-D structures and where they're at with that. Thanks for working that out.
Thank you.